All right. All right, good afternoon, everyone. If you could take your seats, we're gonna go ahead and get started. It's 1:30. Welcome to the May 9th, 2024 Planning Commission. We're waiting on our chairman, who'll be here momentarily, but I'm gonna go ahead and get us started with a few housekeeping items. So if you have a cellphone on you, please silence it or turn it off. If you're here to speak, if you're here to speak on an item today, there are forms outside. Please fill out that form and give them to staff, and you'll be called up on the item that you'd like to speak on. Come to the podium. You'll have up to five minutes to speak on your item. If you're here with a group of people to speak on the same item, we ask that you designate a speaker to speak on that item and share all your viewpoints. And then, please direct your comments or your questions to the commission, and we'll see that they're addressed by either commission member's staff or the applicant. Finally, we appreciate everyone's presence at today's meeting and the time that they've taken away from their jobs and other duties. We just ask that you are respectful of the process and the commission members and the applicants. So with that, we will move on to our first item on the agenda, which is the receipt of the minutes from the April 25th, 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion to receive the minutes?
So moved. Rusty?
I have a motion to receive the minutes from Commissioner La Forge. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second, with Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes when available. Yes, that's a yes from Chairman Pennington. All right, thank you. The minutes are received. Item three is continuance requests.
We have one for uncontested requests. We have item 22, which is case C-7639. Item 23, case C-7650, defer to May 23rd. Item 24, case PC-10930, defer to May 23rd. Item 25, PUD 2006, defer to May 23rd. Item 26, case SPUD 1624, defer to May 23rd. Item 27, case C-7643, defer to July 25th.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on any of those items? If not, can I have a motion regarding continuance requests?
I'll move to approve the continuance requests.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner La Forge to approve the continuance request as read. We have a second.
Second.
And those continuance requests are approved. Do we have any new requests?
We have two new requests. Item 15, case SPUD 1616, defer to May 23rd, and item 23, case C-7650, has been withdrawn.
Okay. Anyone signed up to speak on those items? Looks like none. So we just need a motion on the new requests.
I'll make a motion to approve the new requests.
Motion from Commissioner La Forge to approve the new continuance request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready?
I'm ready.
I'm sorry, I'm a little discombobulated here. Did we include a motion to continue? And are we gonna do that now? Item number 14?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we need a separate motion, since we already voted on the motion to include items 15 and 23. Commissioner Powers moves to continue item 14 to the next meeting of the Planning Commission?
May 23rd.
May 22nd.
23rd.
23rd, excuse me. May 23rd.
I don't have a thing. I've got the wrong thing up here. I'm sorry, that's my bad.
The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. We are now in line, and I apologize for my delay. I was in Norman. Can't be in two places at once. We are in line for the consent docket.
Item one is case C-7651, final plat of Bison Creek, Section 3, located south of West Memorial Road and east of North Mustang Road. Item two, case C-7653, final plat of Nichols Creek, Phase 5, located west of North County Lion Road and south of Northwest 122nd Street. Item three, case C-7655, final plat of Country Colonnade, Phase 6, located north of northwest 192nd Street and east of North Portland Avenue. And finally, item four, case C-7652, final plat of Cedar Ridge at Morgan Creek, Section 5, located north of Southwest 44th Street and west of South County Lion Road.
Excellent. Is there anyone here that was wishing to be heard on any of those four items? If so, we will pull it from the consent docket, and then we'll vote on that individually. All right, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the consent docket as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of the consent docket as read. We do have one on number four. Let's pull, so let's pull four. Would you like to amend your motion, Commissioner Claire?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to approve items one through three on the consent docket.
Okay. So we're gonna approve those three items, then we're gonna, we'll have a chance to have a full hearing on number four, okay? So we'll give you, yeah, we'll give you that chance. The motion is to approve the consent docket, items one through three. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We are now in line for items requiring a separate vote, and we'll begin with item four. Is there an applicant present for item four?
I'm fine.
Item four, because we took four out.
I'm Anthony Hamlet, Crapitol Associates, here to represent the applicant. This is final phase of this development, Morgan Creek and Cedar Ridge, Morgan Creek. It conforms to the preliminary plat, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from commissioners before we hear from our neighbors?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I'm assuming that the person who was looking to come to the microphone was Carla Ogden? I hope I got that right. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to address the commission.
Carla Ogden, and my address is 4001 Angel Oak Drive, Oklahoma City. And we've recently moved here from New Mexico, and so we're used to wide-open spaces. The neighborhood is getting very compacted, and the court that we're on was actually designed to be a court, but it's, the plan, as I see it, is they're planning to take a road through what was designed to be a court. And so we purchased the home, and people, neighbors purchased the home in that area because they felt the safety of a court that, you know, dead ends are often less crime and less traffic that goes through them. And so that, that was the hope of being in that position. Other areas that they have, I think there's 175 homes planned in a 40 parcel area, and they have, those streets are already, you can tell by the way they look that they were gonna be through streets, but Angel Oak Drive actually had a court at the end of it. So it would be nice, I think, two things, to provide a little bit of security and safety for the neighborhood, to have that court remain and not be a drive-through area. And I think it's also important, we have a lovely grassy green field there, and as I'm sure you're aware, that's in short supply as developers are coming in and just taking down all of the trees, and rather than leaving and preserving any of the environment, and as we're looking at a more green lifestyle and hoping to preserve the communities, you know, the earth's beauty that was given and provided. So that would be, my hope is that they would reconsider some of the plans that they've made, that they would allow that court to remain a court, and that they would also take into consideration how important it is that we're preserving the environment. It's a very important issue right now, and so that, that would be my hope. That's, that's what I think.
Well, thank you very much. Well, I think it's important to note just a few things, and I appreciate you coming down to visit with us. Number one, we do have policies in the city of Oklahoma City as far as Plan OKC, which is our comprehensive plan, that do ask that we, as a commission, strongly consider, as we are adding and planning new neighborhoods, that they be interconnected. And so that is one of the inherent values that we have in the comprehensive plan, so it's always something that we promote among developers, to say, where there is that opportunity to connect neighborhoods, we want that to happen, rather than to create those dead ends. I certainly understand your concern for wanting more open space. I certainly, though, developer can respond to that. I can, I, we can also have staff share with you some of our requirements as far as open space, because every development has a certain percentage of a requirement for that open space being provided in the neighborhood, because we do all wanna enjoy that greenery in all of the neighborhoods that we have. So happy to have him address those issues, but appreciate you coming down to visit with us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please.
In regards to the turnaround, that, that's a temporary turnaround for, you know, city utility trucks and, you know, maintenance, but other than that, it conforms to the preliminary plat. It's in conformance with the zoning, so I'd ask for your approval.
Can anyone address the open space requirement? Sarah, Jeff, whoever is good?
Jared, can you address that, please?
I'm gonna stay right here, if that's okay. Jared Martin, Planning Commission, or Planning Department. So developments, when they come through with a preliminary plat, are required to have 3.2% open space, and then 130 square feet per dwelling unit for recreational space. And so that's typically evaluated at the preliminary plat and then confirmed as the final plats come through.
And this subdivision is in compliance with that requirement?
That's right.
So that's what the law allows us to enforce, and they're in compliance with that. I would encourage you, I think, as this development is going forward, or not, this is still the commission's decision to decide if we agree to the plat, but I would encourage you regardless, Ms. Ogden, to perhaps get the contact information for the developer and be able to have more information about, as the process moves forward, you know, there are still things that can still change between now and the time that construction begins, and so having some more information may be helpful to you.
And if I might, I might add just a little bit to the cul-de-sac discussion, the, the streets, the reason those cul-de-sacs were put in is because the, the street length for a stub street exceeded what we allow for a temporary stub street, because emergency vehicles and service vehicles would have to back out the entire length of that street. So since they had planned connectivity in the future, they put in the temporary cul-de-sacs to then be connected when the next phase came through. So it probably did look like a permanent cul-de-sac, but it was actually a temporary requirement, so.
So, I mean, this is a public works question, probably from a criteria standpoint or the requirements of signage, but, you know, typically, when you have a dead-end street, you have your required MUTCD signage that indicates a dead end, that, you know, basically gives some idea, indication that that road could be extended in the future. I'm presuming that's not the case on a temporary cul-de-sac. There was probably no signage or anything like that required. So, I mean, that's, might, might be something to look at, that there needs to be something in place that basically lets people know that that's not a permanent cul-de-sac.
Permanent thing. It's true. And I know it's pretty, it seems pretty common, when we approve developments, that between, you know, phases, that can occur. That, so, something to consider for sure. At this point, we're looking for a motion either way on the final plat, item number four. Commissioner Meek, this is in Ward three.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. This is in conformance with the preliminary plat. Like, it is unfortunate that the temporary cul-de-sac was misunderstood, that it was final, but with everything that we spoke about, I'm in agreeance and recommend a move to approve C-7652.
Subject to the technical evaluations.
Subject to the existing technical evaluations.
Commissioner Meek moves to approve of C-7652, subject to the technical evaluations in the staff report. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item five.
Item five is case 7654, final plat of Reno Industrial Park, located north of West Reno Avenue and west of the John Kilpatrick Turnpike, with variances to Table 5.1 of Section 5.3.2.2A of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon. Steve Rollins, Architekneering Consultants, 135 Deer Creek Road and Edmund, representing the applicant. This is a 21.34 acre industrial development with seven lots, ranging in size from about one and a half acre to two acres. There is one six-acre lot as well. As it says in the description there, we are requesting a variance due to the length of the cul-de-sac. There are a limited number of industrial lots coming off of the street here, and the property is also landlocked due to the Kilpatrick Turnpike on the east, and then surrounding development around the development. So if there are any questions, we're in agreement with the other TEs. If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. This is in Ward three. Commissioner Meek?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. I'm in agreeance with all the staff report. I understand that there's no difference between residential and commercial reg requirements on the cul-de-sac length, so I'd like to begin by recommending a approval of the variance for Table 5.1, 5.3.2.2A.
Any comments from staff on that? On the, okay. The motion from Commissioner Meek is to approve of the variance to Table 5.1 in Section 5.3.2.2A of the subdivision regulations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Commissioner Meek?
Yes. Unless there's any other comments, I would make a motion to move to approve C-7654 with the four technical evaluations as listed.
Commissioner Meek moves to approve of C-7654, subject to the technical evaluations in the staff report. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item six.
Item six is PUD, case number PUD 1486SP04, application by Aztec Charter Schools for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1486, located at 2600 General Pershing Boulevard.
I'm here representing FSB Architects and Engineers, who is representing Aztec Charter School. Today, we are seeking approval of the specific plan, and we feel that we meet all the requirements of the PUD.
Excellent, and thank you. This is in Ward six. Commissioner Gauvain?
Yes, this is a application to add some storm shelters on the site.
Correct.
As I understand, and it's Aztec, Aztec Charter School, staff has no issues, it's consistent with PUD 1486. I have no issues, unless there's other questions or comments, I'll move to approve.
Any other questions from commissioners?
No one signed up to speak.
No one signed up to speak.
Presumably, no one has an issue with keeping kids safe in storm shelters.
Well, there is, actually, there is one. No, but I think it's you, right, Josh?
It's, yeah.
So we're good.
Okay. I will move approval of PUD 1486SP04.
Commissioner Gauvain moves to approve of specific plan number four for PUD 1486. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now in line for item seven, and before we hear, who's presenting from city staff on item seven?
Lisa Cronister.
Lisa, come on up, Lisa. As Lisa comes up, I noticed, I know there's a lot of people, there's a lot of interest, commissioners. I know we've received some phone calls, we've received some emails, a lot of them, and we've been reading them, and we always enjoy having the opportunity to hear from our neighbors about your feelings about this issue. There is one thing that I think needs to be very clear about the vote that we are taking today on item seven. We are not set to vote on the ADU ordinance today. That is not the question that is before the commission. So I wanna be very clear, and we're gonna hear from our neighbors who wanna speak, and I'm not saying, making my statement to keep anybody from addressing us about this issue, but I just wanna be clear procedurally about where we are. The vote that we are taking today, potentially, is whether or not to set the ADU ordinance for hearing at a future date. At that future, prior to that future date, there would be public notice sent, there would be an opportunity for there to be further discussion about the substance of the ADU ordinance. So I think it's very important for all of us to remember, no matter what the commission does today, it is not to say yes or no to the ordinance regarding ADUs, or its impact specifically on HP or HL, the HL overlay. So I just want everyone to be clear about where we are procedurally. We're just voting to decide when we're gonna, we're gonna have a full discussion and vote. If we vote to set this, establish this vote for June 13th, there will be notice that will be sent to everyone, and an opportunity for there to be further public hearing, and then we'd have an opportunity to vote on the substance of the ADU ordinance. So just wanna be clear about the process. Go ahead, Lisa, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, call the item, I'm sorry.
Just, so this is item seven, introduction to introduce and set for recommendation at public hearing on June 13th, an ordinance allowing accessory dwellings as a conditional use in the NC, R1, R2, R3, and R4 districts, and establishing use conditions for accessory dwellings.
Good afternoon, Lisa Cronister, Assistant Planning Director. We have a presentation. Okay, Jeff has, there you go. Thank you. So, yes, to talk to you about our ordinance to allow accessory dwellings in the context of our existing zoning code, and I'll explain more about that throughout the presentation. First, you may be asking, what is an accessory dwelling? An accessory dwelling is a small secondary living unit located on the same property as a principal dwelling. And key words to this proposed definition are cooking and sanitation. When people ask, oh, what's the difference between an accessory dwelling and my wood shop in the backyard, or my storage shed? The difference is, a dwelling is designed as a place where you can bathe and eat, in addition to sleeping and recreation. Next slide. Accessory dwellings are not a new building type. They are a historic building form that's found all over the urban core of the city, including in our historic districts. Next. We started our study of how to allow accessory dwellings throughout the city with Plan OKC. Plan OKC identified various land use, land use typology areas, LUDAs, across the city, each of which is intended to guide how the city should develop. And the main idea here is that more density and development should happen in the urban core while protecting open spaces around the edges. Plan OKC policies guide more density and development in the urban core, because this, in this area, development can take advantage of existing city services and infrastructure instead of building new ones, while improving walkability and reducing negative health Plan OKC actually includes specific policies about accessory dwellings. Policy L12, it says, you know, modify the codes to allow a variety of home, homeownership and leasing types, including accessory dwellings. Policy SU9, revise the zoning regulations to allow accessory dwelling units. And the benefits of accessory dwellings are many. They expand housing capacity, they, because they're smaller and located in the back, the back of the primary house, they're often more affordable option in, in traditional neighborhoods. They can support homeownership, because the rental income can help the primary homeowner more afford the primary home. Social benefits, we've heard from property owners who would like to house elderly parents on their same property, you know, close but not so close that you're in the same home, would like to host other family members in very close proximity, again, independently, but close enough to be of assistance to each other. Again, they're a type of, they can help with infill to increase housing in, in areas that are already served by transit and services. And, oh, and the ordinance we're proposing, another benefit would be, it could, it would accommodate the dozens, scores, hundreds of non-conforming accessory dwellings that exist throughout the city. Again, because they're a historic building form, it would allow those property, older properties to be modified going forward, because they would not lose their non-conforming status. Next. So we believe accessory dwellings are a very positive addition to the neighborhoods, but they're actually not allowed in our existing code. They're not allowed in R1, single-family, and this is the existing definition of R1, single-family, where it makes it very clear that R1 is for one dwelling unit and occupied by any other dwelling unit. So to allow accessory dwellings, we have to update our zoning code. So during the development of the new zoning code as part of our code update project, we identified strong support for allowing accessory dwellings through several studies and surveys, especially within the urban medium area of the city. Next, yeah. We collected in 2022, as part of the code update survey, we collected surveys asking about the types of houses people would be interested in living in now or in the future. Almost 42% said they would personally be interested in living in an accessory dwelling. But when we asked the question, is it okay for the house next to me to have a smaller dwelling, backyard cottage, the response was, well over 80% said, yes, that's fine for that building type to be in my neighborhood. The 2021 Housing Affordability Study also surveyed residents about backyard cottages and housing variety in their neighborhoods. So this, this was the, the map used for that study survey. If you click again, it'll show the urban medium boundary on top of it. So there were three of the survey areas that were inside the urban medium. So, there were three of the survey areas that were inside the urban medium. And on the next slide, it showed that 65% of respondents in the, in the central area, that was Area Six, that's just the, the urban core of the city, that was okay for someone who owns their home to build an apartment or cottage in the backyard. Next slide. The 2021 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice recommended that our zoning code be updated to allow accessory dwellings, including internal, attached, and detached types. Support for accessory dwellings is also evidenced by the number of SPODs, that simplified planned unit development applications that have been requested and approved in the urban core over the past several years, as you are well aware, a lot of them asking to allow accessory dwellings. And because accessory dwellings are not allowed in the existing code, rezoning on a case-by-case basis is the only way property owners can be allowed to have these types of developments. We also researched what our peer cities were doing to allow accessory dwellings. Many of our peer cities allow them with a variety of metrics. Some base the size of the allowed dwelling on a specific square footage, others base the size on the lot, lot size, or the size of the principal dwelling. Some require parking, some don't require parking. Over the past several years, planning staff has, has held a variety of outreach activities for the new code in which accessory dwelling concepts were discussed. We've had focus groups with residents, with developers, with architects and engineers, and all have voiced strong support. If you click again, and we'll see, from the public comment draft that we released in April, we had a lot of responses by email and by social media, generally 70 to 80% in favor and 20 or 30% not in favor. So, given the direction from Plano KC, the support from surveys and studies, the recent rezoning activity, information from peer cities, and our public outreach, we studied how to accommodate accessory dwellings in the development of the new zoning code. So, in the new zoning code, the new zoning districts would be organized based on the land use typology area, the LUDA designation, and the new zones would include regulations related to density, building and site design, parking, and other metrics designed to reinforce the character of the specific LUDA. For example, what's appropriate and context-specific for the core, for downtown, is not the same as what is appropriate for 164th and Rockwell, for example. They're different areas of the city. So, likewise, each new zoning district would have context-specific regulations for accessory dwellings. So, we, we do intend to study accessory dwellings in all districts of the city, and we haven't gotten there quite yet. We focused on the urban medium and urban high. Next. And so, why did we start with urban high and urban medium? For a couple of reasons. A lot of these neighborhoods already have accessory dwellings, they're existing non-conforming, or they were later retrofitted without permits to use as a dwelling. We want to incentivize development in the core. Again, Plano KC had policies, had policies related to development in the core. Adapt OKC, that's our sustainability plan, that talks about environmental impacts of, of cars and energy use. And then Preserve OKC, which is our city's preservation plan that talks about how to keep what we have, protect, and help our historic areas thrive. Our work led to one of our new proposed zones in the, in the urban medium LUDA, the UMSD, which would essentially combine the existing R1 and R2 zones and allow up to two dwellings per lot, including accessory dwelling and accessory dwelling. The accessory dwelling could be attached or detached. We presented this concept to focus groups, to Planning Commission, and to the Stakeholder Advisory Team in 2022 and 2023. And toward the end of 2023, planning staff realized that we had developed most of the metrics for accessory dwellings in the new zoning code, and we saw an opportunity to expedite the creation of ordinance that would allow them in the existing code, instead of waiting for the entire new code to be finished. If you click again, because as you can see, the process of crafting the necessary code revisions is a complex, multi-year process, many of you have been involved along the way, as we perform, perform, perform research, meet with focus groups, draft the code, and present progress to various stakeholders. So, that brings us to the ordinance we are introducing today. Again, this ordinance would allow accessory dwellings in the existing code while we continue development of the new code. Our approach is to allow accessory dwellings in the urban medium and urban high LUDAs if they meet certain conditions, and to do that, we have to add a definition of accessory dwelling. It doesn't exist now, so we have to create it. We propose to add accessory dwellings as a conditional use in R1, R2, R3, and R4 districts. We also want to add it in NC Neighborhood Conservation, and you'll see that in the next version that you see, and then add conditions for the use. Yeah, next. So, general standards, again, the site would have to be in the urban medium, urban high LUDA, that's the tan and dark brown that you see on the map. Other standards, the site, again, is zoned R1, or it's zoned NC, R2, R3, or R4, but only has a single-family structure on it. Only one accessory dwelling would be allowed per lot, it could be attached or detached. It cannot be subdivided from the property ownership, so we're not talking about carving up lots into smaller, unusual sizes. And it, the accessory dwelling must be addressed separately from the principal dwelling. We heard in other outreach meetings with Planning Commission that that was a concern for emergency services. One major thing to note is that accessory dwellings would follow the standards of this new section, not the standards for accessory buildings. Accessory buildings section governs carports, garages, swimming pools, your workshop out in the back, and, but accessory dwellings would follow this new section. We're proposing a maximum height of 25 feet, that's lower than what a principal, primary dwelling in R1 or R2 is allowed to be. The setbacks would follow those of the zoning, underlying zoning district. We have included exemptions for existing historic accessory dwellings, so that they could remain in conformance even if they might be under an older setback. Again, so accessory dwellings and all accessory buildings, so your accessory dwelling, your garage, your, the swimming pool, the patio, all of that would count toward the lot coverage in the base zone. And then, in addition to that, the floor area of the, if you click, one more click. In addition, the ground floor of an accessory dwelling cannot exceed a certain percentage of the lot. This was set up in an effort to give more flexibility to larger lots. And we've coordinated with the fire department regarding site access, and so for accessory dwellings where, that aren't right next to a driveway, or don't have access off the alley, a three-foot-wide clear path would need to be provided for emergency services. Design, we heard a lot in our outreach from neighbors concerned about privacy, so we've set up some regulations about outdoor decks, outdoor second-floor decks and patios to try to ensure some privacy between neighbor, between neighboring properties. Then manufactured homes are not allowed, they're already not allowed in R1, R2, R3, and R4. Parking, we are proposing that no off-street parking be required. One exception is if you're on an exceptionally narrow street, defined as less than 26 feet, 26 feet is, is the, is the standard neighborhood street width, required street width. The reason we're not requiring any off-street parking is that, as you can see from the map, the vast majority of the urban medium and urban high LUDAs are within a quarter mile of, of a transit stop, either current or, or planned. And planned means it's actually identified and funded, so it will happen, it just hasn't happened yet. Historic landmark districts, so this ordinance, as presented, it would allow accessory dwellings in properties with an HL overlay because the H, historic landmark is an overlay zoning, and it overlays R1, R2, R3, or R4 zoning. So, any changes to R1, R2, R3, or R4 would affect the HL districts, and historic preservation guidelines, and the review process of going to HP Commission, filing for a certificate of appropriateness, all that would still apply, including their practice for mailed notice for new projects. And the ordinance, as presented, it would not allow accessory dwellings in HP districts because HP is not an overlay, it's a base zone, it's its own base zone, and this ordinance is not touching historic preservation. We have heard from neighbors in HP districts concerned about accessory dwellings, some want to have them in HP, some don't, and we're going to continue outreach this summer to make sure, again, that we're coming up with context-sensitive regulations for all zones. And again, again, the goal is to make sure that the new regs for, for accessory dwellings are context-sensitive across the city. We're not there yet, development continues as we continue our work on the code update. So, our next steps, we're asking for the ordinance to be set for recommendation on June 13th, and then there will be three hearings at City Council. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and for, for anybody watching or listening, here is how you can get in contact with Planning Department staff with your concerns.
Thank you, Lisa. Are you able to answer, I know that this, this would apply towards Two, Four, Six, and Seven. What does the notice look like? And if you're not the right person to answer that, that's okay, we have staff here. What would the notice be like? Obviously, it's not going to specific addresses.
For the ordinance.
So, for the ordinance, what does, what does notice look like?
Yeah, it's a published notice.
Okay. So, if we wanted to make sure that our neighbors, all over Oklahoma City, who might be impacted by this ordinance, when we get ready to vote for it, we have an opportunity between now and then to make public outreach to them, hold community meetings, hold neighborhood meetings, and get an opportunity for them to weigh in on this ordinance, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so, Commissioners, before we hear from our neighbors, I think it's probably important that they have the opportunity to know where we're headed. My advice would be that we consider, and we can hear from our neighbors about this, and we can, ultimately, we will vote after we've heard from them. My suggestion would be that we go ahead and set the ordinance for hearing, and have a substantive debate on the 13th about the good, the bad, the ugly of this ordinance, and the impact of this ordinance. And if at that time, we are not satisfied, or don't feel like there's been sufficient research, or we don't think that we've had, have enough information, we reserve the right at that point to have continuances until we are satisfied, or to recommend to City Council, no, we're not going to approve this. But I'm, I'm fearful of, of the outcome where we don't set it for hearing, so that there can be further discussion, rather than set it for hearing and know that we're going to have a full public debate, and it doesn't in any way stop our ability to decide later that we're just going to continue it, or we're going to vote no. So, I think we don't want to deprive the public of having a robust, clear, scheduled opportunity to weigh in on this, and we would not be foreclosing on our ability to push it back later at a future date. Thoughts on that before we hear from our neighbors?
I was, well, I was going to ask for one, one additional question to kind of add to that conversation from Ms. Cronister, which is the City Council approval process, could you just elaborate on that? So, if, if we were to move forward and hear this on the 13th, which is still being discussed, and whether we were to recommend, if we were to recommend at that point, I saw three different hearings, so there's, there's an introduction, so is that three months of process of separate?
So, yeah, so the introduction probably wouldn't be any sooner than about a month from June 13th, because of noticing and some other preparation we have to do. And then, the public hearing would be two to three weeks after that, depending on the meeting schedule, because we're getting into summer, and then adoption at the next meeting after that, or the next, yeah. So, it'll be at Council for six or eight weeks.
Okay. I just wanted to get a sense of the timeline of those three things happening, and then note, just because a number of the issues that we may hear about are, are not necessarily Planning Commission concerns, they might be concerns that are better addressed at City Council. I think we're going to hear about them all, and we'll learn more about that, but I think that's, let's set that aside for the moment, and I'll...
Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is that we remove the HL application of this ordinance from this version of what's going to be recommended for, or set down for hearing. My reasons for that are, there has been a lot of confusion, and that's a direct quote from Ms. Cronister 20 minutes ago, about whether or not the, this ordinance applies to the historic neighborhoods. There's a distinction being made here between the HPs and the HLs. At a meeting earlier last week, we heard that that really was not a decision that was based upon, you know, a specific distinction between those two types of land use, it was just that initially, they were all HPs, and at some point, the city decided, oh, well, maybe we should just do overlays instead. Doesn't mean that the HLs are letter, lesser or different. And I think that the HLs need to be considered with the HPs, and that the rest of this can go forward. I think there needs to be a lot more public outreach with respect to the historic neighborhoods. And at this time of year, I mean, it's like the holidays, it's like Christmas time, you know, people are traveling, weddings, graduations, et cetera. It's very difficult to get the kind of concentrated time and effort to have those kind of meetings. There are a lot of different HP neighborhoods to get those things set up and to have them done before we're going to hear this on the 13th. So, that would be my suggestion. I'm pretty sure most of the people that are here today have, are here based primarily on that distinction that's being made between the HLs and the HPs. I think if we lift it out, this thing can move forward, and we can take the time that I think we really need to take to have that outreach, more intense, more, more vigorous outreach with the historic neighborhoods before we vote on this.
Let's confirm procedurally first how that would work. Do we have the ability to do that with the way this has been noticed?
I don't think so. I think you, the only thing we have that you can take action on is to introduce and set for public hearing. I don't think you can change the ordinance.
We can amend.
You amend the ordinance.
The other, the other problem I'd worry about, we can debate that, I'm not, hey, I take advice from our lawyers, but the other concern that I would have is even if we were to, let's say we were to go down that route, there may be Commissioners who have the opinion that HL and HP should be included. We, certainly, we wouldn't foreclose on the ability for them to make those amendments to the, to the ordinance on the floor of, on the horseshoe, and so, right?
No. Are you saying that we're going to decide to add HP?
It's, I'm, I'm saying that if we don't, if we exclude HL right now, or we, if we exclude HL right now, which sounds like a great idea to me, because I know that would satisfy the majority of the concern, my concern then becomes, when we hear the ordinance on the 13th, does that foreclose our ability for any Commissioner to add HL back onto the ordinance? 13th, does that foreclose our ability for any commissioner to add HL back onto the ordinance as an amendment, right?
I should think so. I should think it would foreclose that ability. I'm not clear about this idea that we don't have the ability to remove the HL. But I'm...
Just the action that, how it's noticed on the agenda, the action is to introduce and set for recommendation at public hearing on June 13th.
But our only option is just to decline? I mean, if we don't...
You don't have to introduce it, or you introduce it? You know, those are your two options, I think.
Okay.
Introduce and set for hearing, or don't introduce and set for hearing?
Well, I am opposed to it being set for hearing in its present state, so.
Other thoughts, or do we just want to hear from our neighbors about this? But I do think the question is important. And the question is whether we're setting it for hearing or not.
I mean, there's understanding of the time of year and how this is a big issue. There's a lot of interest. How much time do we need to make sure that the public has had proper engagement is a fair point. I've spoken to quite a number of people on this issue, and some of their engagement and knowledge of this goes back, you know, two years. And so I know there's been a number of meetings and outreach. I was wondering if, could staff, or possibly Lisa, tell us about the engagement that has been done? And, because I know we're going to hear people say, we just found out about this. It just popped up.
And I'll tell you about that myself. Last Tuesday, I got a phone call, you know, it's like, we've just been told that this is going to apply to the HLs. We were told it wasn't going to apply to the historic neighborhoods. And my response was, oh, that's not right. I've gone to these meetings, I've sat through these presentations, I've gone to the neighborhood meetings. It's always been that it's not going to apply to the historic neighborhoods. It's like, well, but guess what? It is being applied to the HLs. And it's, that distinction has created a great deal of confusion. And when there has been outreach in the past, for those of you who've been to these meetings, you'll know, it's very often been presented as, but this is all still in process, and we're still working on it, we don't have the details, it's not all worked out. And so, you know, the expectation was that there would be more once it was finalized. And that just has not come to fruition.
That's, okay, I respect that, Commissioner Powers. I mean, the only thing I would say is, this isn't an extremely lengthy ordinance. I mean, the substance of it is a couple of pages. So how much time is appropriate for people to...
Well, however long they think it's going to take for them to work through whether or not it's going to apply to the HPs. I think those two things, the only distinction between them is that we used to do it this way, and we started doing it this way. But for the people who live in those areas, the distinction is, it's not being applied to you because it's considered zoning that you have HP. It's being applied to you because it's considered an overlay, and you have some other kind of zoning. That's not the understanding that people who live in those areas have of how this works. It may be an imperfect understanding, but it has created a great deal of confusion.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So procedurally, sorry, Commissioner Govine, with the way this is noticed, could we set a different date for hearing? Or is it the 13th, yes or no? Is it like, is it a yes or no to the 13th, or we can move, select a different date?
I think it's the 13th. And then at the 13th, you can have the public hearing, and you can continue it, or amend it, or whatever you want to do with it.
There are an awful lot of people here who have a lot to say. And if we're going to hear it today, we're going to hear it again on the 13th, and that seems to be like a real waste of effort.
That's why I was hoping commissioners, if they had one way or the other, felt one way or the other, the audience could know that, and then, you know, make their own choice about whether they wanted to address this or not. But it doesn't sound like there's consensus with us just yet. So we can go ahead and, go ahead, Commissioner Ford.
I think Commissioner Powers has me convinced, this historic overlay versus HP, that was fairly nuanced, and she's been at more of the meetings. If it hasn't been clear enough, I don't know that I'm ready to set it. If we only have one choice, set it for June 13th or don't, I don't think I'm ready to either.
Go ahead.
Might I suggest that, because, so as far as the timing goes, if the plan would be to remove HL and then take the HL areas forward in conjunction with kind of the HP discussion, and what happens with the zoning code in the future, that's a much longer term, I shouldn't say much longer term, but that's a different process. So to me, it would be, it's worth considering just removing it at, you know, the June 13th meeting and just moving forward, because we're not going to be able to get, to have this whole discussion about HL in an expeditious manner that would not delay the rest of this. And I'd hate to delay the rest of it when it's just a matter of excising a certain amount of it and dealing with that separately, if that's the commission's wish.
I'd be fine with that. I've known enough about it to be, to move forward on June 13th if it weren't for the historic overlay nuance.
The other thing is, I think it's important for our neighbors to understand this, that if it was set for hearing, it is not a guaranteed outcome that HL would be removed. Like, so that needs to be very clear. I don't want to give people the impression that, oh, we don't have to show up because they're going to, they're going to end up taking HL out. That is not promised if it's set for hearing on the 13th. So go ahead, just want everybody to know that.
And I agree that there's confusion about HL/HP, and that that is not obvious and not as clear as we'd like it to be. But I do want to make sure I'm understanding, HL would still have, they don't get to do this as of right. If we said yes to this today, and...
To the ordinance itself?
Yeah, or whenever, June 13th, if this was approved, and council ultimately approved through their process, which there would be more public engagement on, HL still has to get, they have to go in front of the HP board to do an ADU. They do not have the ability to do that as of right. So at that point, when someone in an HL district wants to do an ADU, then they get to reveal themselves, have a public notice, have the public come into that meeting and talk specifically about the cases that would affect them, not this sort of undefined threat of possibly having ADUs near them.
So, okay, I think it's important to keep in mind that when you go in front of the HP Commission, people who get notice of that are the people on either side of you, behind you, and across the street from you, period. It's not like 300 feet around, it's not a generalized notice requirement. And the question here is really about emphasis. It's like, we have very recently had the experience of, well, this is HL, and so are we more worried about density, or are we more worried about, you know, preserving the historic character of this neighborhood? And where you come down on that has a lot to do with how staff, HP, the public in general reads the tea leaves on what our emphasis is here. So the fact that they may still have to go to HP for, I'll call it, design review, does not have, does not trump the fact that, oh, well, it's, you know, in the, in this, under this ordinance, and it says right here that you can do this. So I don't think it's an either/or, I don't think you can push off our responsibility with respect to the one by saying, oh, somebody else will pick that up and deal with it.
Okay, fair point. Well, I'm going to go ahead and play, show my cards, as obviously, I think it's pretty clear, I'm in support of this. I do not think we should remove HL from this. So we're going to have that, we'll have that debate whenever, if we need to slow this down and take the time so those people are engaged, I completely respect that process.
And I'm sure you'll keep an open mind through that process.
I will keep an open mind, but I'm, it's not guaranteed, you know, we'll still have to figure out where we are there. But I think it's the, both HP and HL districts, where this typology of accessory dwelling unit is most common, and really where it comes from. And there is a long history of that in Oklahoma City. My father's first apartment out of college was a garage apartment. That's where he and my mother met, that's where they had me, before they had enough money to move to a single-family home. So it's, I think it's a disingenuous argument to say that these are going to ruin the historic districts. They're more common in the historic districts than anywhere else. So I'll leave my opinions at that, and we can move on with...
You know, I'm sorry, I can't...
Go ahead.
I think the argument really is not that these are going to ruin the historic neighborhoods. The argument is really, we have enough of those things. We are, we're the gold standard you're looking at. We have, you know, throughout my ward, all kinds of ADUs that are in existence. And to bring those into conformance somehow, I don't like the term grandfather, but I haven't found a term to replace it, you know, to make those legal, instead of legally, to make them legally conforming rather than non-conforming. I mean, I don't think the argument is, we don't want these, we don't like these. I think the argument is, we have these already. We don't need this ordinance to make that happen where we live.
Commissioners, before we...
Just to be fair.
I know, now we're having the debate about the ordinance itself, which I was trying to avoid before we actually heard from our neighbors. So I think, so if we were to, if we were to deny this action of setting for hearing on June 13th, what happens?
Let me ask you a question.
Please.
If we were, if we were to decide today that what we want to see is this ordinance move forward without the HL, how quickly could that come back to us? Can that be presented to us on May the 23rd, or on June the 13th? Can that be what we're hearing?
There you go, that's the question.
Yeah, we could bring that back. I see no reason why we couldn't bring it back very quickly.
So then that's an option if we were to vote to, you know, say no to setting it for hearing on the 13th.
And that would be my suggestion.
Which I would be in support of. I would be in support of that. It's just not set it for hearing, let's have this discussion about its final form. If we like it without HL, then we can vote on that, and then see where we are. But that's still up for us to debate, but it's important for us, as we hear from our neighbors, for us to frame the question correctly and clearly, so that they know what they're actually talking to us about. What we're about to vote on, again, is whether or not we're going to set it for hearing on the 13th. And the set for hearing on the 13th is as exactly as presented and read in the staff report. So all of our neighbors are clear about where we are. Any other comments about that before we hear from our neighbors? Please, go ahead.
Wanted to just correct something as Mr. Govine was speaking. So if new or alterations to existing accessory dwellings would be heard by HP Commission, but if it's an existing garage apartment that, you know, no exterior, no new exterior work is being done, that would not be required to go to Commission?
You'd just need a building permit or something to occupy, or a certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, exactly. The Commission is only reviewing alterations or new exterior work. But if it's just an interior retrofit, as far as HP Commission, yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. First, we'll hear from Nick Singer. If you want to be heard. Please give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Okay. Nick Singer, 3308 South Derlin. Did not plan, prepare anything specifically, but I'm going to speak in favor of hearing this. I am a realtor, so with Oakmar today, but also, I'm a developer of affordable housing. And I will tell you, the primacy of single-family homes is a massive impediment to this problem. You can only build a single-family home so small, or so, in certain ways. So there is a maximum limit to how affordable you can make that structure. The ADU thing is great, I mean, great presentation, planning's worked really hard, they've been out already in the community talking about this, but it is a tiny piece of like, this much larger puzzle. And it is incredibly concerning to show up at this meeting and hear we're going to like, delay this even more when it already probably wouldn't even go into effect until October. One of the things I've seen as a realtor is, and this is my understanding, and hopefully we have our facts correct, is that under the current regime, it's like, difficult to even fix an existing ADU. And as has been mentioned up here, it's like, most of them are in these near-urban core neighborhoods. So by not passing this, you are basically committing to continuing to have dilapidated, falling apart ADUs in your neighborhood, which, you know, I don't think you need to be an expert on property values to understand that that's bad. And that's what I've seen showing houses, is like, you will, you know, they'll be able to fix up cosmetic things that don't require permits, but if you have to fix the plumbing, electrical, everything else, they don't fix it. And so you have this like, decaying albatross in your backyard. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I doubt neighbors like that, but you may hear differently from folks. What else? Yeah, I mean, this is probably step one in a long process, so please, for the love of God, move it forward. Don't delay it, don't wait on it, we really need this. They have thought super long and hard about this, they've tried to address every concern that people have, you know, and it's only going to benefit these like, near-urban neighborhoods. And, oh yeah, one last point. And again, I think Ward 6 mentioned it, drive around these neighborhoods. Like, you, we are talking about putting back into place a policy that existed 50 years ago. I mean, you can drive through Mesa Park, Heritage Hills, Crestwood, Linwood, Jefferson Park, Southside, you know, all these near-urban core neighborhoods and see ADUs and different styles of development that aren't just single-family homes. And like, right now, I mean, I'm dealing with projects in R4, it is incredibly difficult to build anything but a single-family home. I could build a 3,000, 4,000 square foot monstrosity of a single-family home, but if I wanted to build a 1,500 square foot with an ADU, you're done, you're out. That's insane. Like, that is just an insane development strategy. Never mind if you want to build duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. So anyway, please pass this, do it fast, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gary Kaplinger. Please give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Hi, my name's Gary Kaplinger, 2244 Northwest 17th Street. I'm also a real estate professional. I've been working, selling mostly residential in the core of the city now for about 15 years. So I want to bring a perspective of, I think me and some of my colleagues are on the front lines of hearing from the demand of what our clients, of what the community wants and what they're looking for. And a couple of things, for me, like, in the 15 years that I've been doing this, there's been a dramatic change in those initial conversations. When I sit down with a new prospective buyer, and what their priorities are, what they're looking for, and those have dramatically changed during that time. In the beginning, it was more about the character of the home, and the character of the community and that sort of thing. But in the last 15 years, what has dramatically changed is a desire to live near a walkable, like, district. Like, A, number one, every conversation I have is someone wants to live close to be able to bike or walk to one of the entertainment districts. So that's, that's been a preeminent thing. And then the second is a desire for a property with a second unit. It's coming up over and over again. I have, I could tell you, I'm not going to spend time, because I know we're not really debating the meat of the ordinance at this point, but I could tell you story after story of client that I've, clients that I've worked with directly in the last year who have been exploring these options. And yes, there are, you know, a number of them in the historic core of the city, but there's not enough to meet the demand. I can tell you that firsthand. I have clients right now who just put contracts on properties in an adjacent community, because they looked for two years and couldn't find a property that met their needs. I have another client who had parents that they were aging, they wanted to live in the same property, not in the same building. They looked for a series of a year and a half or two, couldn't find what they need. They ended up buying in another adjacent, a different adjacent community. It's becoming an overwhelming number of conversations that I have with new buyers, that this is the demand of the community. And so that's, that's kind of my primary. I'm also just, it'll be mentioned numerous times, Nick mentioned it as well, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find anyone that doesn't believe that affordability is one of the key hurdles that our city, that our community has right now and in the coming days. The affordability study, when you compare incomes versus the cost of rent, the cost of mortgages, they just don't line up. And creating more, the only way to improve affordability is, one, create more units to live in, and, two, create a better diverse option of, for units, smaller units, different types of units. And I think this is one step, just as Nick said, one step in the process to addressing some of those affordability concerns. So I'll keep my comments short today. I'll have more stories to tell in the future. And on that note, I would say, I sell, a high percentage of my sales are in the historic districts, the HLs, the HPs, all throughout the historic... the HLs, the HPs, all throughout the historic core of the city. And I'll tell you, the majority of my clients want these in their neighborhoods. I think they can be done appropriately to fit with the style, keep the character of the neighborhood. We need more units in places where people want to be. And, and those historic districts, historic HL, HP, all over the core, those are the places that my clients want to be, and they just don't have the options yet. So I'd encourage you to keep this on the agenda and move forward with it.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Glenn Cosper.
Hi, I'm Glenn Cosper, 1624 Southwest 122nd. I'm the Government Affairs Chair for the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Realtor Group. And what, what I'd like to emphasize to you is that, that this is not something that just happened yesterday. This is, this is conversations that have been taking place for three or four years with different groups, with the city, with, with community partners. You saw that on the, on, on the slideshow that, that the city had for you. This, this is, is something that is part of a, like Nick said, a puzzle. And what the Realtors have been trying to do is, is help address things in Oklahoma City, that homelessness, we've got affordable housing problems, we've got workforce housing problems. We've, we've got high insurance rates. We've, we've got, right now, we, our mortgage rates are up. The, the thing about it is, is this will help families. The American dream is to own a home or to, or to be together as a family, to live in a community. And we're all a community. That's what you're here, you're, you're serving your community. I've been a school board member for about 25 years. That's serving our community. And to do that, you've got to, you've got to be able to, to bring those people to live with you or, or like, like was mentioned, I think, up here. When I went to college 55 years ago, I lived in an ADU in Northwest Oklahoma City. It was, it was a very valuable experience. I grew up in South Oklahoma City. I'd never lived in Okla, in North Oklahoma City. So I, I just have to, to beg, beg you to move this thing forward because so many people have been putting their time and their effort into this to try to solve the problems and to move Oklahoma City forward. And I was privileged yesterday to go to a celebration. The celebration was my aunt, who turned 95, was celebrating a 10-year heart valve operation. And she lives independently. And that she takes a lot of pride with. With ADUs, people can, can have people like my aunt living there independently. Or they can have that college student. They can have that, that first-time family living there. But there's a lot of opportunity in Oklahoma City. We just need to take advantage of it.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Marva Ellard.
Hi, I'm Marva Ellard, 1521 North Chertel Avenue. I am President of the Board of Historical Preservation, Inc. We represent the Heritage Hills Neighborhood Association in Heritage Hills East. I think we see things similar to some of the speakers, but not exactly. I think one of our biggest issues is that we have kept in touch with the planning department over the last year and a half or so. And we were told that HP districts and HL districts were not part of this first phase of the update of the plan. And we realized last Friday that HL districts are included. I've been on a couple of the calls at Neighborhood Alliance with Ms. Allen, and there were 27 people on that call. There are thousands of people in HL neighborhoods. I don't think we've had it, had the ability or were included. And part of that could be misinterpretation from staff to everyone on whether HL districts should be included in this part of it. And we would like the time to work with staff and whomever to discuss these issues, see where our differences are, see what we have in common, and see what we could work out for an ordinance that could serve all parts of the neighborhood. I think Commissioner Powers is right that we do have these housing types in our neighborhoods. We met with Lisa Katie Fredle and Marilyn Allen on very short notice on Tuesday. And it really had not occurred to me that a lot of neighborhoods are, are one, that they just have single-family homes. We have duplexes, fourplexes, eightplexes, 16plexes, the Aberdeen, a church or two, a museum or two, all sizes of houses, garage apartments, you name it, we have it. And we understand the need for more housing in the inner city. But we also want an ordinance that treats us fairly. One thing that has come to our attention is that there was a case continued today. Guy wants to tear down a garage and build a garage with an apartment on top of it. It's in NHL. He didn't, he just decided to apply for a spud. Kind of takes it away from us when it's a spud. And we don't really feel like that is adequate. So there, there are issues like that that we think we need to explore further. I think one of the other things that I'd like you all to consider, it's not going to be college students and it's not going to be a lot of grandmothers that are going to live in these ADUs because they're very expensive to build. The smaller you build, the more per square foot they are. So the people that do them, unless they're doing out of the goodness of their heart for their grandmother or whatever, are going to have to monetize that structure. So an average 500 square foot ADU is probably going to cost $100,000. That is not something you can get $400 a month for. You're going to have to get $1,000 a month for it. So a lot of people who are very interested in this are people who have short-term rentals. We're seeing a lot of it in Paseo especially, where investors buy these cute little bungalows and they turn them into Airbnbs. Because the return on their money is much higher than it is if it was just a rental house for a nice couple who's, somebody's in medical school or somebody's just trying to start a family or whatever, who cannot afford to pay what you can make on a lot of Airbnbs. So I don't want us to delude ourselves in thinking that they all are going to serve a purpose to help people that we would like to see in the inner city. Some will, I'm sure, but some won't. Some are going to be strictly for how much money can I make on this house and on this apartment I want to build in the back. So we don't have any protection from that. I don't know how we get protection from that, but we don't have that protection. The other thing, and I know you all know this, this is not a secret-
30 seconds remaining.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds remaining.
Okay. There's a study done by the University of Oklahoma on housing last year. And it said that there are approximately 14,297 homes that could be built on the vacant lots in the inner city. That would go a long way to helping supply houses for people and let more people live downtown. We would ask for more time on the HL part of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Jessica Thompson.
Good afternoon. Jessica Thompson, 1414 Northwest 14th Street. I live in Classon Tenpen. I've been there for 14 years. I'm also a Realtor. I serve on the National Association of Realtors Housing Opportunities Committee as a chair. Just came back from DC yesterday to advocate. And one of the people we heard from was from Austin, Texas, who did get ADUs through. I also want to remind you, or let you know, that Tulsa approved ADUs last year. So it can be done in Oklahoma. It already has been. So, from there, I will say Neighborhood Alliance, I'm on the board, board president. We've had two virtual workshops on ADUs. We also have it posted, Marilyn presented, and they are posted on YouTube. For those who have not seen it, you're welcome to watch that. It's available. We've had lots of views on there. It's been great. That being said, you know, ADUs, there's different types. And so attached dwelling units I'm going to talk about because they were created post-World War II when veterans were coming back and there was not enough housing for them. People started converting their housing to have extra space for them. So it's not something that's unfamiliar in Oklahoma. Classon Tenpen, we have many homes that were converted to kind of makeshift duplexes to, to accommodate that housing need. So our current housing situation is very similar to that. And I am going to kind of paint a picture for you for the housing market in Oklahoma City right now. So April 22nd, we had in Oklahoma City 951 homes on the market. That's only Oklahoma City. Out of those, if you made $20,000 to $40,000 a year, there were 31 homes that you could afford. But only seven of them would qualify for a mortgage, like a FHA mortgage. That means if you make $20,000 to $40,000, the maximum house you can afford is $120,000. There's only seven of those that you can get a loan for in Oklahoma City. If you make 40,000, and that's under the affordable housing umbrella that the City of Oklahoma City and the housing study created. And then you have workforce housing. So if you make $42,000, $53,000 a year, you can afford up to about a $160,000 house. There were 57 homes on the market that you could afford for 650,000 residents, right? Only 57. And the average income of a resident in Oklahoma City is $68,000. So you can tell there is a lot of competition in the market for these. And out of those 57 homes, 31 of those homes could qualify for a mortgage. I'm telling you, if you see a home in Oklahoma City for $160,000, it's gutted on the inside. It's not habitable. They're very hard to find something habitable under $200,000. So I'm just stating, I'm letting you know, that is the status of our housing crisis in Oklahoma City. And ADUs can really help with affordability. It will also create a revenue stream for homeowners. It helps environmental conservation by increasing density. We have less urban sprawl. It allows aging in place. Many homes in HP, HL areas are two-story. And ADUs can help empty nesters be able to move into a one-story home. And perhaps they could, you know, ADU where they could rent out that two-story home and be able to live in the back and live off of that income. I also want to mention that this, you know, it will enhance opportunities to fair housing. And that is something that we desperately need here in Oklahoma City. I would also like to mention, from personal experience, I have a two-bedroom, two-bathroom house, family of four. We have a garage, and I've been waiting on this for years so that I could build an accessory dwelling unit in my backyard for my uncle to move in because he can't afford a place on his own with a single income, working as a manager at Taco Bueno. So the goal would be to build this accessory dwelling unit on my garage, let him live there for as long as he can. And then my two children, who are 10 and seven years old, maybe one of them will be able to move into that once they've graduated high school and want to have a little bit of that freedom. We can practice them paying rent to us. But that will allow us to be able to also maintain our space in our community. And I will say with empty nesters too, the beauty of being able to build a one-story accessory dwelling unit in the backyard is that you would be able to keep your neighbors. You won't have to move. So I'm, I'm in support of this. And I will say the Realtors, we would like to work with the City of Oklahoma City to help create pre-approved ADU floor plans that could potentially be passed through with the permitting process. And it will also, I think, help neighbors feel a little bit better about the architectural character that could come into play. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sarah Casey.
Good afternoon. I'm Sarah Casey. I am the Policy Subcommittee Chair for Government Affairs for Oakmar. Without going over the merits of this ordinance, because we're not that far yet, I would invite you to seriously consider the loss of an opportunity to have the merits of it heard without any further delays. This ordinance would be able to enhance someone's ability to define the use of their home. Right now, I, I think it stands to reason to point out that this is a non-conforming structure sitting in their backyard. They're not complying with rules and regulations as it is. And it fails to provide the necessary tools in order for them to fully have use of their home as you would attempt to think with private property rights. And we can make all of the arguments June 13th. What I would strongly recommend is that we have opportunity to do it by approving to move forward with it at this time and make all of the necessary pros and cons at that juncture. I am also a real estate broker for more than 10 years. And I, I don't think it's a secret for anyone that we have a serious lack in inventory for any housing, let alone affordable housing. And I do want to point out that a non-conforming structure on a piece of property will strongly diminish the ability to finance it. So any one of these things that have these existing, you're very unlikely to be able to get a loan against it that might affect whether or not a veteran could use that home. Or, you know, something that would need that conforming use to be there in order to pass it. So I, again, I strongly, I'm not saying you should be for or against this today because that's not why we're here. I'm saying, please provide the opportunity to have those arguments. Thank you.
Thank you. We have heard from the neighbors who have signed up to speak so far. And Commissioners, I think, at least from what I've heard and read so far from those who have concerns about the HL, how, the application of this ordinance on HL or HP, I'm not hearing, no, we don't want ADUs necessarily. I think what I'm hearing is we need to find some ways to make it workable and ensure that the purpose, the intended purpose of making more affordable housing, making more housing available in the urban core is done in a way that's respectful of the character and nature of the neighborhoods as they are. And that is a delicate thing to do. So I'm strongly in support of there being ADUs. I'm very strongly in support of it. I know that there is a housing crisis. We, I think we all are there. I think the question is how we can find a way to, to pass an ordinance that works for everyone. And so for me, it, it doesn't foreclose on us having, delaying the conversation further if it's set for hearing. But I am fearful that if we say, we'll bring it back without the HL overlay, for example, there is nothing procedurally for this commission that would prevent us from amending that, that action that we'd be voting on, that recommended ordinance. There's nothing procedurally that would prevent us from adding HLs or HPs into it. Like procedurally, we could still make that amendment to the ordinance. Just like if there's a piece of the ordinance that exists, when we, if we were to hear it, we can always take stuff out. We reserve that, right? We're legislating at that point. So that's why I'm fearful of, if we're, we're just going to say, well, we'll take HL out of it, and then we don't have our HP and HL resident neighbors here because they assume it won't, it won't automatically apply to them. There's nothing procedurally that prevents that from occurring. So for me, it's, let's set it for hearing. There's nothing stopping us from, at that point, saying we don't want it to apply to HL. And it sounds like there's some really good debate that's going to happen at that point. And you, you have me convinced that HL, we clearly need to make some kind of changes to make sure that we can respect the character of those areas. So you have my ear, and I'm happy to go to any meetings about that because I'm curious to see how we can solve that problem together. And I, so I hear you. So I, as far as the substance, I wouldn't vote for it as is. I want to see us make changes so that we can address those concerns of the HP and HL people. But I think we should have that conversation and, and on June 13th. And if we decide we need more time, we can ask for more time. Please.
I just want to be really clear about that procedural thing.
Please, please.
I, I was with you right up till you got to your conclusion.
I saw your face on that.
What, what I thought you were about to say is, so if we deny this now and instruct staff to bring us back an ordinance that we can set for hearing that doesn't have HL in it, then we know for a fact that the HL and the HP are not in it.
But what I'm saying is-
But we can't, I don't think we can do that and then decide at that meeting, oh, so we're just going to go ahead and put the HL- we're just going to go ahead and put the HL and HP in here. I don't think that's possible.
Is that procedure, is that allowable?
Because it won't be noticed that way.
Okay. So is that possible?
Yes, I think you can make a recommendation to council that they add that back in. I mean, it's an ordinance amendment.
Even though it's not, it hasn't been noticed? That, I mean, you're telling us we can't vote to take it out today because that's what's been noticed and that's what's in front of us, but we could decide later that we could add something? That doesn't even make sense.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I do. I think it's an ordinance that's going to be before you, and if you thought that something should be placed back in it, you could make a recommendation to council that it be placed back in it.
Placed back in it, just like any legislative action.
Or if it comes back, if it comes back to you as it is today, and you want to take that out, you make your recommendation to council that you don't want it to apply to HL.
That's why to me, it's important, even if we decide, I'm going to vote with you, I mean Commissioner Powers, I'm going to vote with you when it comes to, let's exclude it for now until we can work it out.
That's fine. I cannot possibly agree with that legal analysis.
We have, we still have time to...
But I understand, she's our lawyer, so, you know, that's fine.
But I mean, I would have the same argument on the other hand. Why don't we leave HL in and we can debate taking it out on the 13th? Because I hear a lot of people that are for it in HL and HP districts. In fact, I hear a lot more of those people.
I heard people who work in those districts, not people who live in those districts.
But I would still want our neighbors who are in HL to show up, even if it wasn't in there.
I agree, I agree.
And that's the issue.
I absolutely agree with that. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm willing to go either way, as long as it works.
Who gets notice for the June 13th? I thought this was so expansive.
It's public notice.
It's published notice.
So whether HL's in or not, it's still the same notice?
But yes.
Okay.
It is the same.
That's what I thought. So it's not a notice issue then. I thought this was a public notice to everyone, yeah.
So we need a motion. Sounds like we've debated. We just need a motion either way.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend that we put this on the agenda of the June 13th meeting.
The motion from Commissioner Claire is to set the ordinance for hearing on June 13th. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. And so to be clear for our neighbors again, we could still delay this further. We can still make amendments to this ordinance once it comes to the commission on that day. This does not mean that we won't be able to make further changes. I welcome the opportunity to be a part of any discussion about how we can make this ordinance better, make changes, or maybe it's just to say no to it altogether. I'm open to hearing those opinions, and so I hope that you will include me in any of those debates or conversations with anybody about this because it's a great conversation for us to have about how we can make our city a better place. So thank you, everyone, for that. We're in line for item eight.
Item eight is SPOD 1607, application to rezon 11765 North Morgan Road from PUD 1872.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzel with Johnson &amp; Associates. Address is 1 East Sheridan Avenue. The spud before you today is one that we heard a couple weeks ago. We took a two-week continuance so we can meet with the neighbor, Mr. Short, to the south. Concerns were raised over a cement plant. That was what was handed out to this group about environmental and health impact concerns. My office, the developer and the operator, all met with Mr. Short, talked through. I think one of the main points of concern was the cement. Our client explained that what we're doing is a temporary concrete batch plant. The process in which cement versus concrete is manufactured is vastly different. And so the studies that were brought up were in relation to cement, not the temporary concrete batch plant that's being proposed. So this, what we've learned are the approvals and inspections required with concrete batch plants. Our operator, who has several, goes through two to three inspections a year. He is approved, regulated, and inspected annually by the EPA, the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality, and the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. So there's regular onsite visits to ensure that they are meeting all of the regulations that they're required to. Some of the other concerns that were brought up were air quality and then the potential pollutants that could end up in the neighbor to the south's pond. A couple of things that are worth noting, predominant wind pattern moves north, so our wind is, any air pollution would be moving north, not that we believe that there are any, based on the studies we have. And the second, the neighbor's water actually drains onto our property, not the reverse. So any runoff that our industrial development generates is going to be moving north. And again, we'll be meeting all local and state and federal regulations. So with that, what came out of that meeting were a few TEs, and I've handed those out. Those include limiting the total land area of the spud to the concrete batch plant to one acre in size, an agreement to plant evergreen trees on 25-foot centers along the southern boundary line of the spud. And then this is a corporate headquarter operation for the batch plant operator. And so to further screen and help prevent any additional noise or lights is we're going to place the corporate office between the batch plant and the road that exists today. So other concerns that were brought up really had to do with noise and industrial operation. This is a existing SPOD that is zoned for industrial use, and it has been for a few years now. We're seeking the one use for the temporary concrete batch plant. I think what you might hear is going to be in regard to heavy industrial. Because of the way concrete batch plants are in the code, we included the heavy industrial use unit in our spud, but it is restricted to the temporary concrete batch plant. There are no other heavy industrial uses that we are seeking to approve in this spud. Happy to answer any questions. Chris Klein, who's the developer, is here and happy to answer any additional questions as well.
Thank you. This is in Ward 1. Commissioner Claire?
I don't have anything on it.
So I'm ready. If we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do.
Or other Commissioners' comments?
Any questions from Commissioners? We did hear this before. I think the concern was about the pollution from the batch plant. So I don't know if we've heard sufficient information about that. We do have a neighbor signed up to speak as well.
Well, I'm, thank you for providing the additional information. I mean, the fact that, you know, the natural drainage of the property goes to the north, you know, away from one of the concerned neighbors, I mean, that's very helpful, so...
I was just going to ask about the temporary nature. And when I see the word temporary, I wonder, okay, well, is there a time limit on it? Is there a plan in place when that goes away? Because once this is approved, that use is there for, like, it's hard to kind of get my head around that.
No, that's a great question. So temporary in nature comes from the type of equipment that is placed onsite. So I don't want you to believe that this is only going to be there for six months or two years. The type of equipment can be constructed onsite and removed at any point, but we fully intend it to be operational since this is their headquarter. They intend to have clients come, see their process, see the equipment. While they're doing that, they're going to be manufacturing their concrete to service development in the area. So this is not something that will be temporary. It comes from the manner in which it's placed onsite.
Okay, thank you. So it's permanent, but labeled temporary because it can move? Okay. Do you want to hear from our neighbor first? All right, Jordan Short.
Hello, my name is Jordan Short. My address is 11605 North Morgan Road. As Mark talked about, did have the opportunity to meet with Chris and Colt, some of the guys that are working on the concrete side of things. Last time I came here, there was some misinformation provided by us to the distinction between the cement and the concrete batch plant on there, which Mark did talk about. There are regulations as far as the EPA and things like that that do regulate a lot of the stuff. There are filters and things that are required for a concrete batch plant. With that being said, there's still a lot of pollutants that go past that. There are studies done by the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality on there that talk about this specifically for this, specifically from the transfer from the silos to the trucks is where the bulk of that comes from on there. And so he is correct that this is not a concrete plant, that there are regulations in place, but there's still a lot of pollutants that get out into the air. Half the year, the wind comes out of the south. The other half the year, the wind comes out of the north. I mean, we all live in Oklahoma, and no, the wind comes from both directions on there. And so we still have a lot of concerns about that for my family, for the animals that we have there, for the pond, everything in regards to that. In addition to that, if you look at the spud here, 1607, it is set up as a modern industrial district on here. If you go into the purpose statements on Oklahoma City's Code of Ordinances on there, these are things that are going to be frequently visited by customers and clients on there. There's a provision on there for outdoor storage and things, but what does say is it may generate relatively low levels of noise, odor, smoke, dust, and light intensity. Whenever you compare that to a process such as a concrete batch plant on there, they do have to designate that as a heavy industrial on there. As such, it says that it may generate relatively high levels of noise, vibration, dust, smoke, lighter odor on there. In addition to this, for this reason, it is desirable, but they locate a downwind and as far away from possible as any residential and commercial uses. So with that being said, with the location of it here, it's still inside the pud, 1807. It's still in very close proximity to our residence there, our land, and for those reasons, I have to recommend that you guys deny that this is pushed through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you want to respond?
Sure. I think one of the efforts to mitigate the potential concern was to move it to the furthest possible point on the site and then place a building in between it and add additional landscaping. At the end of the day, the I-2 moderate industrial use that is allowed in this spud is a carbon copy of the spud that exists onsite today with the one change. In terms of outdoor storage, that is not an allowed use in this pud, or in this spud. So concern there, I don't think is as relevant as it won't occur.
Mark, you're saying that outdoor storage won't occur?
Correct. We do not have outdoor storage as permitted use in the spud.
So the materials to make the cement won't be stored?
That's ancillary to the batch plant. So for that use, with it being ancillary, that's permitted. But in terms of other industrial users, you're not going to have outdoor storage that you'd see in an I-3 or heavy industrial zone.
So I think my concern with this, if this was a larger piece of property, it wouldn't bother me as much. It's only two and a half acres. I feel like if somebody's wanting to do this on what is more permanent basis, should be on a much larger, larger piece of land. That way, you could be located farther away from all of your neighbors.
Sure. So our client plans to put their corporate headquarters here. They feel that the site that they've chosen is appropriate. At the end of the day, this is not a large concrete plant operation. It's for them to showcase their product onsite and then service some amount of development that's occurring in the area, which is why they have not sought a much larger piece of property. Additionally, I think if this was a cement plant that you'd see, it would be a significantly larger piece of property.
So it sounds worse to me. It's not just a showroom, and it's not just to service the area, it's for both. It's both to showcase and to service the area. I mean, it's, it's getting worse in my mind.
So it's already I-1 or I-2?
It's a spud with an I-2 base setting.
With an I-2 base? So if it's an I-2 already with that, it's subject to pretty much every use that's on here except for the concrete batch plant? Every current use listed?
Every current use except for the concrete batch plant. That was the reason for the spud.
And my sense is neighbor and my concern, it's only with the concrete batch. So if we want to take that out, yeah, then it's fine.
I think it's a difficult call for several reasons. Number one, it is industrial. It's currently zoned industrial. So the thought that there would be industrial activities there is not unreasonable to me that we would approve a spud that allows continued industrial uses. I'm comforted by the fact that there's a building that's going to be between the batch plant itself and the residence. I'm comforted by the fact that we're going to agree to some additional screening, but we are talking about an industrial use. Like, it's still zoned industrial. That residence came even though it is industrial property? And so I just have a hard time. And we've dealt with this before where it's like we've boxed out industrial uses and we start running out of places where we can reasonably put industrial uses because we just keep agreeing to housing in places because, again, there's a housing shortage in Oklahoma City. And so then we limit our ability to have industrial uses in general, and that worries me. And I feel like it's a little, it's just a tough call. I am comforted by the fact that the batch plant is in the, is furthest, as far away as it possibly can be from that residence. And it sounds to me like the work that's been done, one, heavy industrial would concern me in general. Again, if we're only talking about one use, so we're only talking about one specific use that has been proven, doesn't produce the same level of pollution and those issues as a cement batch plant, I think it's a tough one, tough call. But where are we, Commissioners? Because I think we just, go ahead and vote.
Actually, I have one more question. What's your standard operating hours?
So right now, there's no restriction. I think that's come up in the past on some of the other plants that they operate. It's typically dictated by the season and when they can see outside. You know, we're still, we still have to meet the Oklahoma City Light Ordinance, so we can't run this all evening, but that changes based on when the sun is out.
I think this might have been touched on last time. So we've gotten to the, we understand that the temporary is not really temporary, which kind of helps, well, helps explain things, but I was not concerned at all about the fact that it's a landlocked spud, right? It's not served by any public roads, is that correct? You have to access it across another PUD.
Well, so the whole, the whole PUD is a hull. This SPOD is going to sit within the hull of the PUD, is a plat, and that road is, has an access easement for every lot to take off of. So this is lots four and five of the Barline industrial plat.
Okay.
So we have access out to the street. That's recorded at the county.
Okay.
And that street is built to industrial Oklahoma City standards.
Okay. Knowing that it's more of a permanent thing, I wanted to make sure the access and all that works, and that's not a further concern. Okay. Yeah, but let's be clear. Temporary does not mean temporary.
No.
Please, Commissioner Meek.
My experience with something like this, the temporary means instead of building a silo, it's tilt-up trailers, you know, it's a different kind of equipment. That's the word temporary. Take the word temporary completely out, it's a concrete plant, and it's going to be there, and it could be there forever if they wanted to. I share a I-2 moderate street. My neighbor is Deleese. I've been there since 1998. There's houses behind the Deleese plant that I'm neighbors with, and there's plants like this all over the place. With my opinion is, with this being an industrial street, industrial lots, they're trying to add a use, I don't think it's a bad neighbor.
Mark, what's the distance from the house to where the plant will sit?
A little over 900 feet.
But to be fair, our neighbors have animals, they have land, they use the land, so it's not, let's not say that it's just about the location just from, just from house to the plant, though.
I'll note, because this came up, about 300 feet to the south is an active oil well and storage tank, and that property does drain onto theirs. And we're three times further than an active well.
Mark, is the sand in the aggregate going to be stored outside or in a silo?
I might let Chris answer that question.
Sand in the aggregate or outside? The cement's inside in a silo?
Hi, my name's Chris Klein. I'm the developer. I own Barline with my partner. I'm not the owner-operator of the batch plant, but to my knowledge, the Portland cement that's used that I think was the miscommunication part is in a silo that goes into the truck. The sand, the gravel, and the water are held out, they're not held in a silo, they're held in like bins, but they have walls that bring them up. I didn't, I've got, we could provide pictures if you guys wanted to see what their current batch plants look like, but I think Ward 3 has experience here.
Call them totes, I believe. They're in totes.
Yeah, no, I was just curious about the sand because it can obviously blow in the wind. wind.
Okay. I think we need to go ahead and make a motion of some kind and see where we are, unless there's further debate.
Where I am is it's been industrial for a long time, so we're adding the single use. It's not ideal, but I think it's, I think it's an acceptable use. So I'm going to move to recommend approval of SPOD 1607 to City Council.
With the three TEs?
With the TEs, yes.
Commissioner Clare moves to recommend approval of SPOD 1607 to City Council. That motion, and that includes the
We need to read those in.
...TEs that were added on the record.
Do we need to read those in?
Yeah.
Could you please read those into the record?
Yeah. Would you read those in?
Yeah, so TE1 is that the concrete batch plant should be limited to one acre in total area, land area. TE2, the evergreen trees shall be planted on 25-foot centers along the southern boundary line of the spud. And TE3 is the corporate office shall be placed or located onsite between the batch plant and the entry drive to the development.
So Commissioner Clare amends his motion to include the proposed TEs that have been read into the record. So the motion, again, commissioners, is to recommend approval of SPOD 1607 to City Council, subject to those TEs as read into the record. Is there a second? Okay, there is no second? Okay. Okay. Again, motion on the recommendation to approve of SPOD 1607, making that, moving that recommendation to the City Council. And the motion passes. I would remind our, thank you, Mark. I would remind our neighbor that the process is not over, that it will, in about six weeks, it's going to be heard for the city, by the City Council. So I would encourage you to reach out to your City Council person and have further discussion because it is not final action by us. Okay. We're now in line for item nine.
Item nine is SPOD 1619, application to rezone 11145, South Sunny Lane Road, from AA.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Sid. I'm the owner and operator of the Oklahoma Motorcycle School and Position Driving School. Currently, we train students off of I-35, I-35, sorry, I-35 and Indian Hills. One of the reasons we are moving because ODOT displaces, because they're trying to expand the I-35 and Indian Hills intersection, that forced me to buy a property off of Sunny Lane. The reason, one of the reasons is most of the property along the Sunny Lane is I-1, classified I-1. The property, right, the existing property which is recently purchased, right next to it is actually also a classified as I-1. It's currently used as a truck repair straw. The way, the existing spot of I-35 and Indian Hills, the way we operate is we have porta-potties for the students to use, and we have a container, like a conics containers, storage for the bikes to store. Just to give some introduction on how the course is conducted, this is a basic rider course, which were, who, for the students who never rode motorcycles before. Our students are walks, of a different walks of life, such as we have students from, coming from military background, we have a lot of students from Tinker Air Force Base, we have some cops taking our courses, so as some women, teenage students who are 14 years plus age, they have to be minimum 14 years for them to ride a motorcycle in Oklahoma. The way it works is students drive in with the cars, they don't come in with any motorcycle because obviously we're trying to teach them how to ride a motorcycle. And that the training part is usually is done within 10 hours, and we do five hours each day. The age, for any student who is less than 16, 14 to 16, legally, they cannot ride a motorcycle which is less than 300 CC, which is not, which is more than 300 CCs. All the bikes we train students on is anywhere between 125 CC to 300 CCs. We train low-speed maneuvers because that is where the most of the accidents happen. We're not a high-speed training facility. And also because of the size of the training pad or the training range, no high speed is even inherently possible because of the size of the range. And we do not allow any Harley as the size of, minimum Harley which is available is 500 CCs. And more so than that, the Harley makes a lot of noise. When I'm trying to instruct kids in front of me, my students, I cannot get, I cannot be louder than, you know, I have to scream my lungs out to make myself audible. So because of that, we don't use any of the Harley divisions. And also, we cannot train after dark, as the state auditor has to, they don't work after hours, right? So because of that, we inherently restrict our, the training courses during the daytime only. And auditors, of course, don't work. On top, I put some PowerPoint presentations, so for everybody to see. The motorcycle, these are the restrictions we, you, how do I go back? So we are a family-owned small business, serving Oklahomans for more than 17 years. It shows the type of services we offer, driver's ed, motorcycle, and driving exam for ages 14 plus. We are heavily regulated by Department of Public Safety, and we follow a curriculum which is set forth by Motorcycle Safety Foundation. The key here is the Safety Foundation, right? It is for the safety of public. We're not, we're not trying to open up a strip club or anything of those are. We just, this facility is to help Oklahomans ride better. So these are the, some of the training restrictions we have to follow. This is not by us, it is given to us by Oklahoma Administrative Rules. The training only can happen during the daytime because we have a certain patterns the student has to follow. If it is dark, the students cannot follow the patterns, right? So that is number one. And our training is audited by Oklahoma Safety Office. The rain specifications are, we have a 200 by 100-feet pad, and also it needs to have a, like a 40-feet buffer, so that people, if they lose out of control, they can, they can, they cannot go over to a different origin. It is impossible to achieve a speed more than 18 miles per hour because we only train in a first and second gear. All the motorcycles are less than 300 CCs, like I said before, and we cannot train the students in rain, snow, tornado, or anytime, any time, any there is a lightning. Most of the classes are, during, most of the classes, we stay busy from April to September, but otherwise, in October and Marches, we don't have that many students. We target six months in a year. October to March, we don't have it because, of course, it's going to be cold season, and if it snows and stuff like that, we have to cancel the classes because of that. Now, this is some of the, I put together some slides to show that the motorcycles, this is from the National Highway Safety, the noise by different motorcycles. If the motorcycle is operating at a south side, 35 miles per hour less, the motorcycle decibel level is 78, 78 decibel. If you look at the right side, it shows that the gas lawnmower makes a, has a decibel noise of 90 to 95. I'll come back to the slides in a minute. Let me go to the next one. Now, the sound, as its radius, for every, every 50 feet, the decibel level changes, reduces by 6 DCB, right? So if you start with a 50 feet, if it goes to 100 feet, it goes down by 60 decibel level. The reason I brought that up, we'll go back to the next slide. Okay, so this is the current location. The nearest neighbor to me is 632 feet, not even to the front of the door. If you notice this, if you take a size of the motorcycle, which is producing 78 decibel level, if you take that 50 feet, six feet, right, so you're reducing it by 6 decibel, which is, how do I go back? So that is less than people talking to each other, which is 60 decibel. What I had earlier is less than 10 decibel level. Now, let's go to the forward. The next neighbor next to me is 30 decibel reduction, then if they hear it, it's like 48 decibel, which is less than, you know, people, two people talking. Now, as far as the, the site plan? Where's the site plan at? Okay, so if you look at the site plan, the entrance to this property, the training pad going to be from Sunny Lane.
We're getting any more than that.
Can you minimize this or? A slide. Oh, wow. Yeah, it doesn't show me the whole thing. So anyways, the entrance to this training pad going to be from Sunny Lane going in, and there is no other entrance to that because the Sunny Lane is, you know, facing the main road. So yeah, that is where the entrance is going to be. I'm here to field any questions, if you guys have any questions.
Well, since we couldn't see the site plan quite that well, can you describe the extent of the concrete in relation to the trees on the site?
So it's, okay, so yeah, that, so what do you, was the?
Oh, here's one. Well, we got one that actually, it doesn't show up in our packet. Okay.
I haven't, I haven't seen a site plan that allows me to understand where the training occurs on the site.
Well, I'll pass you what I've, what I'm, we can pass that around, but what it's showing is that the pad is towards the back of the site.
Yes.
The, there's a lengthy drive, it's pretty much where the, where the tree area is.
So yeah, I'm sort of remember the, the tree bushes on the side, so I'm cognizant of that, and on top of that, like I said earlier, this is not for the, you know, to, is for the helping the Oklahomans stay safe, right? So if you notice one, if, there is pure statistics out there that anybody who took MSF course, which is our course, is a lot safer than the who did not. So people who have been riding Harley for 40-plus years, they go through our course and they enjoy it. Because it's the low-speed maneuvers, they're not high-speed. Because at high speed, anybody can control the motorcycle. It's the low speed is where most of the accidents occur. That is, that is the number one thing, is that to keep the motorcycle, like I said earlier, we're not doing anything to harm the society by opening up a, you know, marijuana grow or trying to open up a strip club or in the block. This is I-1 property along the, yeah, this is I-1, which is along, most of the properties are I-1 along Sunny Lane. So I made a, earlier before I applied for I-1, and then the committee recommended that we need to come back to SPUR, so which I changed it to SPUR, because the I-35, and the reason I started with I-1 is I-35 and the Indian Hills currently is I-1. So I stayed with that, but the committee said, okay, let's change it to SPUR. But last time, we didn't have the good presentation because nobody understood what we're trying to do, what we are actually doing. So because of that, that started to have, you know, people started assuming that we are actually riding with a Harley and this and that, it's going to be a lot of noise, which is not the case, because if the motorcycles are loud, I cannot get my point across, because we don't ride behind a student to show him how to do it. We have to communicate verbally. Because of that, we have to be louder than the bike. So we cannot possibly have a louder bike in the training course. That is number one. Number two is the safety. We cannot train a student on a heavier bike, because a lot of our students are women, like I said, teenagers, 14-plus-year-old, so, because that is the reason why we cannot have your bikes. So I'm here to, like I said, if you have any questions, I'm here to field those.
Okay. So one, it sounds like there's a distinction to me. I hear that, okay, low speed is how it operates. I understand that, I get that, I understand the rationale for that to occur. I get that that makes sense for your business model. What I'm, what we're here to do is determine land use and approve of this permanent ordinance. And so as far as my understanding of what this moderate, this use unit, 8250.15, allowing motorcycle instruction and training, does, is not self-limiting to low speed or low noise or any of that?
It is.
Or is it? Okay.
It is, because like, like what I told you before, right? The Oklahoma Administrative Rules, I'll, I'm glad to send you the information which is there. Now, here's the thing, the 200 by 100 feet, that is determined by Motorcycle Safety Foundation. That is not something we came up with. The instructions we provided to the student, we cannot go more than second gear. On the instructions, we have to follow those to the dot, not, we cannot do anything, we cannot come, okay, let's start riding at 30 miles per hour. Number one, they have to follow the pattern, they have to stay within that area. Number two, we get audited. So when we audited, the instruction says specifically second gear, 15 to 18 miles per hour. That is the most they can ride, that is the most they can go up to. Now, if you want me to send you the, I can, I'll be glad to send you that information.
Okay. I hear you, I understand that. I also have been on this commission long enough to have heard about our extensive regulations from the Department of Environmental Quality, of which I had one understanding of what the state was doing and a different understanding of the reality. So can someone from city staff verify for me, and it's okay if the answer's no, but can someone verify for me what the ordinance allows as far as the use unit regarding the, any limitations on the noise or the CCs or the gears that they're in? Because I don't know that that's inherently in that ordinance.
Before she answers you, I mean, is there any reason why we wouldn't be able to simply modify that use to a fair weather use, a daylight use, a low-speed use, and maybe, from what he was saying, you know, certain months of operation?
Exactly. I love all, that's where I'm headed with all of this. That's why I want to understand what fully is in the ordinance so that we know what we need to add to it.
Sure. Sarah Welch, Planning Department. So for the, this particular use, the use that's needed is the moderate, moderate impact institutional use. So what we, so he was here before, asking for a base district, the recommendation was to do a spud. So staff has helped craft the spud. We recommended that he limit that use specifically to the motorcycle training. We incorporated the two conditions that would normally be required for that use, the specific use standards, which are already in the MDS, which is about lighted facilities and setbacks for parking. We tailored it for the south boundary of the spud, because that's where the residential is. And then we cautioned him, based on our last meeting, that the spud tool may be a tool that could be used to do things like Ms. Powers just mentioned, daylight hours or...
Fair weather.
Fair, yeah.
Low speed.
That would be...
Certain months only.
Yeah, I mean, we, the low speed is inherent to it because of the size of the pad. Each exercise, we do 14 exercises in the course, and each exercise, they have to follow a certain pattern.
I get that, and I understood all that, but since, since I'm hearing you say we're already doing this, is it a problem for you for us to build it into the SPOD?
No problem, because
I think that's the answer.
Every time we schedule a class, we have a conducted class, we have to send in the roster into DPS, and they have to come out, if they wanted to do us auditing, they will come out and do the auditing. Of course, the Oklahoma State employees doesn't work after hours, before, in the dark, so they will have to come out during the daytime to do the auditing.
Tell me, you had said that, you know, there's certain, certain months of the year are better than others for you. Are there certain months of the year that you just absolutely cannot operate?
I cannot do it because of the snow, because if there's bad weather, I cannot do it, I have to cancel the class.
But that's a fair weather thing. Are there months of the year, like, we don't work in January, we don't work in February?
We don't run in December because of the, December, January, when the colder seasons, we hardly have any classes, because we post a class, student signs up, we have Because we post a class, student signs up, we have a class. If there's, there is no students because of whatever reason, we cannot have a class.
Okay, I, I'm asking you, when, when you say we hardly ever have classes, I'm asking you, are there months of the year that you can say, we don't operate in December or January?
December, January, February, we don't operate.
Okay, there you go. So that would be, if we're gonna consider this, my recommendation, that the use unit 8250.15 be, you know, provided, that it be limited to daylight operation, fair weather operation, um, uh, low speed operation, and the months of December, January, and February, or, or that the operation be limited to March through November.
I think we might have to define low, low speed, and we may have to, what about fair weather? We may have to define that, but we do have neighbors signed up to speak, so while we think that over, go ahead, Commissioner Clare.
Yeah, I have one question, I have a question. Looking at the site plan, you've located the pad at the back of the property, which then you've got residential immediately to the south. Is there any reason that you can't locate it at the front of the property?
I, I just put together something, so I, there's, I can bring the pack towards the closer to the, to the front.
I mean, I, I think that has some benefits from a couple of standpoints. One, there is no real development immediately north or south of it. And two, if you're able to maintain the existing vegetation on the back, on the west side of your site, that's gonna help mitigate some of the sound issues off to the west.
I would agree. The, one other topic I was gonna clarify was, uh, screening requirements are per base zone. I-1, we're actually adjacent to, it looks like AA, there's, PUD 1576 is where the residential is. So we, this site doesn't appear to actually border that immediately. Are we seeing that? Well, if we're looking at the black and white version of this drawing, perhaps, if that's, it looks like we're immediately adjacent to the residential, but there's a strip of land between that's AA, so do we or don't we require screening on the?
Are you talking about souths or the north? The north, we have the I, I-1.
Yeah, north is I-1. I'm just talking to the south.
The south, yeah, I think AA, but there is a, uh, tree line right next to the property, so it naturally stops the sound. I mean, it's, you're talking 30, 30 decibels, 30 decibel. On top of that, uh, putting hedges to surround my range with, so that in that way, there's not noise pollution or noise, uh, noise thing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we were clear on, it's a topic I know we're gonna hear from some neighbors, but I want to know is, is or isn't screening going to be required on the southward boundary?
The I-1 district is required abutting AA.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's, let's hear from our neighbors unless there's anything else from commissioners. First, we'll hear from Selita Chandler. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to address the commission.
Uh, Selita Chandler, I'm at 3900 southeast 108th. I'm directly west of that property. I have, um, 10 acres, and 108th is a private road, so we, you know, we're just south of there, or west of there. I just don't want all of the people coming and going, you know, from the neighborhood, and just trying to keep it as peaceful as we can and less traffic. So we, you know, don't have a lot of theft out there at this moment, but, um, I just would rather not have a whole lot of people out there. And, and that property that's just due north of there is, right now, it's vacant. I think somebody bought it, but it's not being used. And it's not a, um, it used to be a trucking company repair, but it's not. The, the next house over to the north of there, they were serviced out of a lagoon that's just directly south of where he's wanting to put that, um, plot. That lagoon is still there. I don't know if it's, they have to be using it at that house at this time. I don't know. I don't know if anybody ever addressed that in the last meeting about that lagoon. So what is he gonna do with that property with that lagoon right there? And is there gonna be any, like, um, gas runoff into that creek that, it runs down that, where that tree line is? Just directly south? That's like, it runs, all that water runs down to my pond, and we just put some fish in there. So is there gonna be any runoff from gas leaks from the motorcycles, all that kind of stuff?
As far as the lagoon, is the lagoon located in this property?
I think so.
Like, in that?
Yeah.
Square?
Yes.
I don't, I think it's outside of it.
Hmm, I don't think so.
Okay, we might have to get some answers about it.
The other people that are just gonna speak, they might, they, they know more than I do, so.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll hear from Dan, I'm very sorry. Don, I apologize. I'm gonna, I'm your last name. I am so sorry.
It's Majors, it's Don Majors. I write terrible, I admit it. I work for the city too, that's why I write terrible. I live at 11500 South Sunny Lane Road. Uh, if you remember the picture with the house across the street, that's me. So this place, uh, the I-1 was for that shop building. It was a truck repair place. Before that, it was a, a, they built sheds out of it and a couple of things. The last thing, Ed's son-in-law, who did own all this property before he, he passed on, uh, let his son-in-law run a shop out of it. Uh, while this is up, where the little trees are at, where the dot starts and goes across the street, that is where the sewage lagoon is at. That sewage lagoon feeds the house just north of it, and also feeds, there's a little house and a shop. If you could, uh, you can't scroll up if you Google Earth. There you go. If you see the square and go to the rectangle square top, just down about an inch, a little bit more, right there, that's the shop building that feeds into it, and then that house just north of it is the house that feeds into that sewage lagoon. Still there, it's grandfathered in, it's been there since I was Oklahoma County. This place still has no city services. There is no city water. There is no city sewer. If I recall right, he wanted to put a 20 by, uh, 200 by 200 pad in there, which is, uh, 40,000 square feet. If we get a one-inch drain like we're getting right now, that's about 23.14 cubic feet of water. That will not be allowed to absorb into the ground. It's gonna come right down to the south where that tree line is, go underneath Sunny Lane Road and right onto my property. If something does get spilt out there, there's no remediation way to clean up oil or water. Uh, there is no sanitation facilities. He talked about last time using porta-potties. Hey, I'm good with that, but we all know those blowover Oklahoma winds. And I got this big beautiful sign that the city put in saying, "We feed Lake Thunderbird and it's that pollution-free area. You're not supposed to do anything in it." So, on top of that, if he remediates the, uh, sewage lagoon, somebody in that house is gonna be upset because that's where it drains into. Uh, this was one property, even the property to the south belonged to Ed Waits. They subdivided 13 acres off, which is the 111th court, and they had a hard time getting that put in there. The rest, uh, has been since subdivided by the family through the Ed Waits Trust, uh, I guess getting money. And they've just put it in four different sections. I don't think it's a good fit for that area. A motorcycle school, this is the middle of nowhere, except for a bunch of residential houses. And that's not what people go out there and buy a one-acre lot to put a house out there. They want peace and quiet. I personally love the fact I can see the stars at night. I have a total of 15 acres out there. There's plenty of flat land, crossroads mall, they can have no water, no sewer, put porta-potties in, put a container, put a motorcycle course in there, and it's thousands of square feet. Adding this in this area just doesn't fit. It didn't fit with the neighbors, yes, the sound, uh, and I'm across the street, I can hear motorcycles going up and down Sunny Lane Road all day and all night. But the Dudley's, uh, the Kings, uh, the Estrinos and everybody else is gonna be right backed up against that. And it's just not a good fit for the area. Any questions? I've lived out there 25 years and tell you about the whole history of it, but it's just not a good fit.
Any questions from commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Majors.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Powers, sounds like you were doing some drafting.
You know, I, I just think that if, if they're already sort of acknowledging that they have these limitations, if there, if there is a desire to vote in favor of this, it might be a good idea to add those, and I'd be glad to read them off, but.
Please.
Um, I, I just think that it would be, it would be a, a good idea, if we're going to adopt this, to limit, uh, the use unit 8250.15, that it be further limited to daylight operation, fair weather operation, um, the months of March through November, and to, um, speeds, um, at a maximum of, I don't know, 20 miles an hour, 15 miles an hour, whatever makes sense. Low speed, whatever.
You've heard 18 is the limit.
We, we, that, that portion, we cannot go beyond that. So that is built into the course itself. It's nothing that I can control, even if I wanted to go high speed. So like I was saying earlier, it's a slow speed, control the motorcycles at a low speeds. At a high speed, bike is keeping itself upright. Anybody who rides a bike knows that. Because a slow speed is where it becomes really heavy really quick. And we are helping more, Oklahoma motorcycleists to be safer. That, that is the, that is the thing we're trying to do here.
At, um, at full capacity, how many bikes would be running at one time?
We, at full capacity, we don't have more than eight.
Eight, okay.
We don't have more than eight students in the class, because we have a ratio of one instructor to anywhere between six to eight.
Okay.
So we don't always have, it's like, when I say in winter season, we have a lot of cancellations. So the, 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 if, the best thing to do is, if, like, I will invite the neighbors to come out and check it out. They can come out and check it out to see what we actually doing. Because we, they don't have the visibility into it, people are really leery about, hey, you know, hey, what are you doing? Are gonna be noise pollution, this and that.
Yeah, I kinda had the, the same feeling before I went out there. As I said, I, my neighbor's electric lawnmower is louder than those, all the bikes running at the same time, so.
I want to also say, I, I stopped by your class on Tuesday.
Okay.
And, uh, pulled up in the drive at the gate. It's where you put your banner on the fence, and I couldn't hear any of it from sitting there.
Uh, the loudest thing was, uh, the instructor.
Yeah, and the wind.
We, we are heavily governed and regulated by Oklahoma Safety Office. That, like I said, I did not pull this course out of, you know, uh, my hat. It's, we're not doing anything outside the, uh, Oklahoma Department of Public Safety Office, uh, governance.
And, yeah, you definitely might want to look into that lagoon issue. That would be, uh, would, uh, probably change your site design a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, moving the, uh, the pad a little bit closer to the Sunny Lane.
Yeah.
You know, that, that, that is doable. Uh, putting a hedges around the, uh, to reduce, minimize any kind of noise, that's doable. Operations are limited by inherently because of the, because of the patterns are not visible at night. On a black asphalt, you cannot see the patterns, which they do it, so I cannot put them at na, at risk by training the, training the students at night.
So, okay, so, yeah, I think we just need to, are we, where are we? Sounds like there is amendments. We good with the amendments? I think we're just ready to vote.
Yeah. Okay. I'll, uh, move for approval with the TEs we talked about, um, the daylight operating hours, um, low speed, under 20 miles per hour. Operations between March, November. And what was the other one? Fair weather?
Fair weather.
Fair weather, yeah.
I still don't get the fair weather.
He's not gonna operate in the rain anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how, what the legally enforceable standard we're creating by saying fair weather.
And frankly, in terms of impact on the surrounding neighbors, I'm not sure it makes a bit of difference. It's just one of the things that he said was a limitation on what they do.
On the operation. Okay.
I, I, I don't feel that that needs to be a TE. I, what I do want to maybe propose, um, for a possible TE is to preserve existing trees to the greatest extent possible.
Okay. Let's add that. I'm, I'm in agreement with that. It's just, it's your motion, Commissioner Privet.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Were you suggesting that there also be some kind of limitation on the number of students? He said eight, I might give him be generous and give him 10, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to know how many max bikes he had, so, you know, get an idea of how many people were gonna be there at one time. But, uh, yeah, I, you gonna limit 10 bikes?
No, we can't have 10.
Can't have 10?
Each, each class should have less than eight, because we have too many students in the class, we cannot manage them at the same time. So that is a restriction put on by Motorcycle Safety Foundation, that one instructor can only have, so, anywhere between six to eight at tops in a class.
So we're gonna have, are they on there?
The whole OSC has a larger pad, larger range, where they have two instructors and 12 students. But our range is not the big range because we cannot afford to build that million-dollar pad.
Right.
Because of that, we had to compromise by putting a smaller pad, and that restrict us to having a one, two, six to eight ratio. And we cannot have that, we cannot have anything more than that. A lot of the restrictions you're asking is, is built in. It's not that, you know, I came up with it. And so there's really, what you're asking us putting in the stipulation is there.
Right.
I mean, if, like I said, if you want me to send a copy of the restriction.
So do we want to limit it to eight?
Yeah, if it, it can't be more than eight.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, and I apologize to our neighbors. You've been called on. Unfortunately, our rules, I cannot have neighbors coming back and forth, up and down on, on this.
Restrict the CC size to 300, let them 300 CCs go for it. That, that is the limit anyways.
Okay.
So engine size, 300 CC.
Yep, go for it.
Max of eight motorcycles. And daylight hours, um, preserve trees as much as possible, and, uh, operating March through November.
For staff, have we been clear enough on what these TEs say?
For me, yes, because we, we've got the, we've got the speed noted. Yeah, I can't think of any further.
The main thing is the speed, right? That, that's what people concerned with, the decibel level.
Give us one second, though. Hold on one second.
Nope.
Just yell at us.
How is motorcycle instruction slash training?
Be limited to operating during daylight hours, shall be limited to a maximum of eight motorcycles, and will occur during the months of March through November. The maximum speed shall be 20 miles per hour.
And 300 CCs on the engine size? Do we need to address the decibels since these promise to?
We have a noise ordinance.
Okay.
And 300 CCs.
Yeah.
Acting like I know it's.
Less than 300.
Is that inclusive of everybody, everything we said?
Eight bikes and trees.
Yeah.
And then.
Out in the trees.
And then trees.
Yes.
And then T2 would be tree, shall be preserved to the maximum extent possible.
Okay.
Good, yeah.
So the motion is, Commissioner Privet moves to recommend approval of SPOD 1619 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. I would say to our neighbors, um, again, as I said on the previous case, um, we are making a recommendation to the City Council. City Council's gonna make the ultimate call. That does not prevent you from going to the City Council and further arguing your case for their final decision, so, thank you. You're now in line for item 10.
Item 10, item 10 is SPOD 1620, application, uh, to rezon 1532 Northwest 30th Street from R1.
Good afternoon, Caitlin Turner, 522 Call Core.
Good afternoon, Caitlin Turner, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The application before you is an S P U D to clean up the zoning for an infrastructure, bring it up to code. It looks like a single family, the previous owner renovated it, so it's now a triplex. So the S P U D just simply allows the existing structure to remain, no other development is contemplated. It's directly across the street from the University Point and Campus Point Apartments, so that's all zoned R4. There's a duplex immediately west, and then kind of a mixture of zoning within this area. Staff recommends approval, we don't have any TEs, we have not heard from any neighbors, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Caitlin. Commissioner Powers?
Yeah, I do not have any issues with this. I mean, driving by, you'd never know it's not a home, for one thing, but if you were gonna build apartments, this is where you'd build them.
Absolutely.
I don't have any issues with this at all. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on the matter?
No, ma'am.
Well, then I'm gonna move approve, unless other commissioners have comments. I'm gonna move approval of item number 10, S P U D 1620.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval of S P U D 1620 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. Thank you, we're in line for item 11.
This is S P U D 1621, application to rezone 1821 North MacArthur Boulevard.
I'm Terry Moore, and I represent the applicant, and I believe we've met all the requirements they've asked for.
Want to say anything else about your project?
The only thing that concern, and we, the little strip that goes along the edge there is gonna go into this PUD. And at a later date, that's all commercial. Would we be able to come back and take that and turn it into the C3 if we just decided to put the driveway toward the center instead of on the edge? I mean, we'd have to reapply for that little strip.
Yeah, the little strip, you'd have to, because we're zoning it, we'd be zoning it now to...
Well, it's going in with the PUD, the spud. But if we took the, if you go back, may now flip back, but we own all the front part of that, so we may not bring the driveway straight into that property, we may bring it into the center.
Oh, okay.
And I understand, then we would need that to be, you know, because we may push a building on the C3 onto that spud. Does that make sense?
As long as it's compliant with C3, but that would be an amendment to the legal description of the boundary of this spud, so it would fall into, by staff, is it administratively approvable or not? If you made a change after this?
We would have to reapply that strip. I mean, we'd have to come back and ask for rezoning to C3 on that strip, but we may just use that for the driveway anyway, it may not be a big deal.
Well, hold on just a second. Would they really, Sarah, have to come back and ask for rezoning if they decide that they don't need it for a driveway and they're gonna, I guess if you're gonna build over it...
Yeah, that's my concern. If it was a C3 and we're in with this, would it be, it may create a problem.
I can't imagine you'd have any trouble getting that approval, but...
Yeah, I mean, we would have it drawn out, what we were going to be putting on that building. It might, it may become a strip mall, I'm just using this for example, and we would be on that property, and the driveway would be in front of it, is what I'm saying.
I don't think there's be anything that would require rezoning to do that, as long as it's compliant with C3 and with this spud. So as long as it was consistent with the spud and C3, I can't see why that's an issue, unless staff is seeing something different than me. Because it would depend on which side of the line you're on, the connection certainly wouldn't be prohibited.
What do we think?
Sorry, I'm overthinking it maybe, but, so, in order to apply for C3 zoning, you have to have a minimum of 12,000 square feet. So if it meets the minimum lot size, you know, it'd have to meet that first, otherwise it'd probably come back as a spud. So probably the easiest thing would be to make it your access. We've talked about access. We've suggested in the spud that you don't have to have frontage along a street in case you wants to sell the back part. We've changed the lot frontage requirement to 20 feet to match the boundary. So we did everything that we could, but I don't, I can't speak now about what would happen if we had to bring that strip back for C3.
C3 now.
It's R4 right now.
So, are you okay with that? That you may have to rezone it later?
Yeah, I mean, it may just be the driveway. I mean, it just dawned on me when I looked at that, I went, oh, why don't we change the driveway to, if we put a building on that, we'd wanna push that.
Probably not across it, no.
Yeah, so that, that was, I'm okay.
Okay.
I'm overthinking it.
It's taking us too long to get this far.
I overthink things.
And this whole thing has been kind of thought about probably more than it really needed to be, but that's because there's a park behind it. And so, you know, there were some concerns about how that would work out and, you know, having protection for that area because of that, so. Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this item?
No, ma'am.
Any commissioners have any comments or questions? Then I'm going to move approval of item number 11, S P U D 161.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval of S P U D 1621 to City Council.
Thank you. I always forget that part.
That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item 12.
This is S P U D 1623, application to rezone 10331 Northwest Expressway from AA.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzow at Johnson and Associates, One East Sheridan Avenue. Before you is a fairly straight, fairly simple case. We're seeking to rezone this AA property that fronts Northwest Expressway into commercial and office. I handed out a sheet of paper, staff had a TE in the staff report, we're gonna add two additional TEs. The additional TEs are a maximum of two access points from Northwest Expressway, and shared access shall be required between the tracks. There was a resident who owns property across Northwest Expressway, they were here, I believe they signed up, I talked to them. Really, they're having trouble getting in and out of their property. I told them we'd be happy to have a conversation with ODOT with them. There's no center turn lane here, you can see it ends to the east of our property, and that's really their, their main issue, it wasn't with the development, so they have since departed, the room, that is. So, happy to answer any questions, but would ask for your approval. Trying to keep it light, guys.
We could use it, okay. All right, item 12, any questions from commissioners? Sorry, this is Ward 1, Commissioner Claire.
Yeah, no, they've, with the additional TEs, they've addressed my only concerns, which was access from Northwest Expressway and cross-access, so I'm happy with it.
Great. Is that, I take that as a motion to recommend approv...
If there's no other discussion, I am happy to make a recommendation of approval to City Council for S P U D 1623.
Subject to the technical evaluations as read into the record.
Subject to the technical evaluations. I'll read them into the record, so it's a staff, staff TE, and then the proposed TE is by the applicant of a maximum of two access points from Northwest Expressway, and TE3, shared access required between lots.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of S P U D 1623 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you, we're in line for item 13.
This is S P U D 1625, application to rezone 1801 Northwest 14th Street from S P U D 1225.
Mark Zitzow, One East Sheridan Avenue. This is a case that was rezoned a few years ago, it's immediately south of a tract of land that Luric Theater sought for a parking lot. COVID happened, I think that application stalled, but still owned by them. We rezoned this property previously for three single-family homes. The site plan is almost identical to what was previously approved. The reason this application is back before you is we're seeking a live-work unit for this property, and so staff had two TEs. What we would ask is that TE1 be replaced, and the first section of TE2 also be replaced. The proposed TEs, commercial spaces shall be limited to 600 square feet of gross leasable area, and then for access, one drive per structure shall be permitted. And then we're fine keeping, the existing alley must be improved to allow access to the northern lot of the spud, such improvements will be constructed in accordance with applicable city standards.
Commissioner Goveen?
Yes, I've looked at the case, I mean, it's really a very minor difference from what was previously approved, I'm in support of the case. Happy to hear any other questions or discussion, though. The alley improvements, yeah, I think that's a good, you've kept that, so that's good. If no one has any questions, then I will move approval of S P U D 1625 with the proposed TEs as, well, should I read them out?
Yep.
Okay, with the following TEs. Number one, the existing alley must be improved to allow access to the northern lot of the spud, such improvements will be constructed in accordance with the applicable city paving standards. TE2, commercial spaces shall be limited to 600 square feet of gross leasable area. And TE3, one drive per structure shall be permitted.
Thank you. The motion, Commissioner Goveen moves to recommend approval of S P U D 1625 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations as read into the record.
I moved it, but I don't see anything, it just disappeared.
Try it again.
There we go, one more time.
There we go. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Forge. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was 14 and 15 continued, or just?
Yes.
Okay, so we're in line for item 16.
Item 16 is case SP 589, application for special to operate use unit 8300 point free drinking establishment, down alcohol permitted, in the I-2 industrial district, located at 900 Southeast 59th Street.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Natasha Baldian, address is 2847 Southwest 40th, Oklahoma City. We're asking for a special permit for a establishment for sit-down alcohol. The building was built in 75 with the intent of always being a bar or club, so not really understanding the purpose for a special permit, if someone could explain that, it would be great, but we, that's what we're looking for.
Okay, it's already I-2, so, sounds like a drinking establishment is probably, is probably a lot less disruptive than I-2, but...
Probably.
It is in Ward 4, Commissioner Privet?
Yeah, and being in I-2 is kinda weird, too.
And we have an establishment two doors down that serves beer and alcohol as a same establishment as we are, and it was previously zoned, and it's never operated anything other than a bar or club, so, don't really know where to go with it.
Okay.
Yeah, that doesn't make much sense.
It's just how we do it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, no one signed up to speak, are there any questions from commissioners? I think we're ready for the motion, Commissioner Privet.
I'll recommend approval of S P 589.
Commissioner Privet moves to...
There is a TE, so, location designated for sale, consumption and alcohol beverages is limited to the area shown in Exhibit B.
Commissioner Privet moves to recommend approval of S P 589 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluation in the staff report. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Zitzow's back.
And the motion passes. Good luck. All right, we're in line for item 17.
This is P U D 2004, application to rezone 9420 West I-4 Service Road from P U D 1547 and AA.
Mark Zitzow, One East Sheridan Avenue, on behalf of the applicant. This is a P U D that's owned by the Swisher family, if you recall, projects to the south that have come through, land had been donated by this family to the city for a future city park. This tract remained, there's actively a paintball operations, if anyone's into paintball, you can head out there. The future of the property, we hope to be an RV park, and so, Jared, if you go to the site plan, you can see, something happened on that scan, but the lower portion under the pond is where we're looking for RVs. It comes in off the service road, we're less than half a mile from the interchange, so we think it's a great spot for RV staging and stay. So staff recommended approval, there were two TEs, we'd seek to strike TE1 and replace that with no more than 30 pad sites shall be permitted from one drive, a secondary access point should be required, should the development include more than 30 pad sites. That was language that I worked out, and the number of pad sites was agreed upon by Mike Wilson, that follows the subdivision regulations for single-family homes. And then we agreed to TE number two, but happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this is in Ward 3, Commissioner Meek?
Yes, I, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
Yes, but it sounds like this person is in support of it, which I find it hard to believe, if there's too many commissioners here, we're gonna be in opposition.
Right.
So, if that person still wants to be heard, even though we're gonna say yes, it sounds like.
After they sat here all this time.
Yeah, I guess so.
Well, good afternoon, my name is Kyle Hooper, I'm representing Canoe Technologies here today. Our address is 9528 West Interstate 40 Service Road, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs at Canoe. We manufacture advanced mobility products in the EV sectors, key customers such as Walmart, NASA, US Postal Service, Department of Defense, and many others. This is the first time that we've came to speak at one of these before the commission, and we look forward to participating in these in the future on matters affecting our facility. As I mentioned, we're the current tenant at the adjacent property, and we are in support of this zoning variance today, and we look forward to supporting this development as we move forward. Thank you.
We don't get a lot of those.
No, thank you.
So we'll take it, we'll take the good news when we get it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. With that being said, if no other commissioners have any other comments, I would like to recommend approval of P U D 2004 with the, following the, yeah, the TEs as handed out to us. TE number one, being replaced by saying no more than 30 pad sites shall be permitted from one drive, a secondary access point shall be required, should the development include more than 30 pad sites, and new TE number two, to preserve the existing tree cover and native understory within the floodway and 100-year floodplain on the site to the maximum extent possible.
Excellent. The Commissioner makes moves to recommend to City Council approval of P U D 2004, subject to the technical evaluations as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. Okay, and the motion passes?
Thank you.
Did we not see, I saw it on my screen, sorry. Did we miss it?
What happened?
I did, I saw it as unanimous, was I mistaken?
There, on the top screen?
Yes, I saw it on the top screen.
That's quick.
Okay, we're now in line for item 18.
Item 18 is P U D 2008, application rezone 6205 South Post Road from R1, AE1 and AE2 to P U D 2008.
Good afternoon, Caitlin Turner, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant who is here with me. So this property, or this P U D is to allow for soil mining that's taking place, and then eventually storage, and then commercial on the hard corner of Southeast 59th and South Post Road. It's important to note that there is a heavy industrial land use typology layer on this site, as well as, it's in an AE1 and AE2 zone, as well as some of the surrounding area, which greatly limits any residential development from being located in this area. There's a civil engineering campus to the west, as well as Tinker-owned property to the east and west. And then to the south, you'll see P U D 296, that actually has an I-3 based zoning district for an asphalt facility. They have not had any issues with neighbors in the past, we have not heard any concerns or had any issues since we submitted this P U D. Staff does recommend approval, subject to some TEs, and we agree to all of them, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Okay, to clarify, where on the site is the...
The mining, yeah, from the south end.
To the south of the property. If you go to the current aerial, you can kind of see...
Cleared space.
Yeah, the cleared space, that's the site plan, but, no, keep going.
Yeah, that's even uglier.
Oh, apparently this is freezing up a little bit, so we'll get there. There it is, you can kind of see it on the southern portion of the site.
So... So, that use is going to remain, or is, they're not going to-
Yes, it will, it will remain. Whenever they, they already have their restoration plan and everything. Whenever they no longer are going to be operating it for that use, then it'll be restored to its previous state and then developed for storage is the intent there.
Okay.
We do have a number of neighbors signed up to speak.
I figured.
Do you want to hear from them first?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Okay, all right. First, we'll hear from Lou Arnold.
Good afternoon. My name is Lou Arnold. I live at 6916 South Post, which is directly to the east of this proposed change. You've got the military there at Tinker on the west side of this proposed zone areas, but I did talk to three of the homes south of me and three of the homes north of me. And out of the seven residences, this is all R1. It's been R, I've been there 27 years. At least, life has been there 27 years. I worked for the DOD, so I was gone a lot. So, but this is all R1 out there. And I would say that after talking to my neighbors, they're all rabid in opposition. And I'm in opposition also. I don't mind if it stays R1, if it all gets subdivided and put into houses. But every business that has gone in on Post Road all the way up to 29th Street has failed. They've gone in and gone out of business almost about as fast as they, they come and go. And now, Post, we're not exactly happy that Post is going to be expanded because Douglas will be closed, because Tinker, having worked for the DOD and the Pentagon, Tinker's an incredibly poor real estate manager. The entire military is. So, if you take a look at Tinker, take a look at the complex there, it's more parking lot than it is buildings. Tinker has no multi-story parking. Now, it is that facility there, even though they have 15,000 employees. But anyway, I'm in opposition. My neighbors are in opposition. We don't mind if it all gets subdivided and goes one-third acre or higher and stays residential. But we're going to have a lot of trucks and noise as they expand Post to take the place of Douglas. And that's going to be a problem there. But having that go into all kinds of commercial strip malls and whatever else is the kind of traffic that we did not move there. I mean, we all moved out there because we didn't want that. So, that's my say.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Next, we'll hear from Bobby Davis.
Thank you, Council. Bobby Davis, 8401 South Westminster Road in Oklahoma City. I want to reiterate Lou's point of, yes, we all moved out there to get away from all of the traffic and cars and noise and everything else that is going to go along with this commercial operation. I have two properties just directly east of that Don D Road that's just down below that. And you see that, there's a diagonal line that runs through that property, and that is part of the Oklahoma Rural Water Pipeline that feeds from and to Draper Lake. So, I have concerns with the traffic, but also have concerns with any major trucks. We can't, if you don't have something structurally in place, you can't take anything over that pipeline in several areas on the pipeline, because they will collapse. So, I've got environmental impact questions. I've also got the fact that Draper Lake, which is just about a mile and a half south of this area, is one of Oklahoma City's primary drinking water resources. So, commercially, we're going to be mining soil from this area. We're going to put a commercial establishment, or we're going to put a commercial area on the corner of this, which is, again, right into a residential area. The roads out there are just not acceptable for having major trucks and major traffic. We're not set up for that kind of transportation, large trucks. The road's going to be expanding. They're going to be closing Douglas. I just think this is a very poor idea for something over there. I do agree with Lou, and I'm sure many of the other neighbors, if this was a one-acre residential, I really can't see a problem with it. Having a few cars added into this area is not that big a deal, but the big trucks with the roads and the construction that we already have issues with out there is just, it's very, very going to, it's very taxing on our roads that we already have, so, that's what I have.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Warren Spellman.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Warren K. Spellman. I currently live in Chickasha, 408 Fieldcrest in Chickasha, formerly of 6205 South Post Road on this property itself. My family's had that property for about 100 years. Little history. Tinker took 160 of the 200 acres we originally owned back in the 60s. That's why that big military training section is there. So, that was most of our farm at the time. We currently just had the 40 acres. Recently, I'm just, recently sold just 30 of those acres on the southern part to TJK Investments. And the key issue on this property is that now that Douglas Road is going to be closed, and that's been decided, we know that Post Road's going to become the main north-south thoroughfare of that area down the road. And what we're wanting to do on that northern part, just a one-acre deep on the northern edge, is that I was wanting to go ahead and, you know, basically face facts, that those areas might need a little quick stop, a gas station, possibly a store, because it's now basically going to be a commercial area. It's going to be one of the few access points to the base. It stops at Berryman, and I just wanted to encourage the council to just face reality. Those folks would need stations. There's a nice school a couple miles down the road on Southeast 759th, and I think it'll be an asset to have some planning down the road. I'm not sure what we're going to put there eventually, but my thinking is some kind of a commercial plan, very generic at this point. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Okay, just a few points to note, and to Mr. Spellman's point, we are agreeing to a specific plan, so in the event that this does get developed, you will see the site again before you to go through those details. I understand that one of the, or I understand that this may be more favorable to some people for it to stay residential. Unfortunately, with that AE1 overlay, which covers like half of this property, residential development really isn't an option here, especially with that heavy industrial layer that doesn't really conform to the comp plan either. And then not to mention that, again, heavier industrial zoning to the south, I'll also point out that in terms of traffic, in addition to Post Road eventually being expanded, the use unit that's currently on this property, and then the RV use that will potentially take over, those are like two of the least, you know, high-traffic count uses that you could ask for. So, traffic is kind of naturally mitigated, just with the nature of those two uses, and daily trips being just historically very low. And also to the comment about the pipeline to the south, there's no access along that south boundary line. It's further north on Post Road, so that won't be touched. So, I'd be happy to answer any outstanding questions that you all have.
Questions from commissioners before we figure this out?
Mr. Turner, do I understand that there's already soil mining going on?
Correct. Yes, that is correct.
Legally?
Good question.
While we're trying to, we're bringing up to code. We are, you know, doing the right thing now.
So, so, your point is it's not legal operation, okay. And so, is there, I'm not sure-
Is your mic on, Commissioner Powers?
I'm sorry?
Your mic?
I can't hear you. My wife can't hear you.
I don't have my mic on, I'm sorry. The other question, I'm not sure how much this affects my view about this one way or the other, but what's the deal about closing Douglas and the development of Post Road? Is that on the books already?
It's going to be-
Do we have a, do we have a schedule for that? Will those two things align in some way?
Well, this closing of Douglas, no one knows when that's going to happen, but Post Road has been awarded-
They've already, they've already started work on it.
So, it, it will actually get improved before they close Douglas? Is that possible?
Yes.
Okay.
Seventy-fourth needs it more than anything.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Hoping Seventy-fourth Street gets the same. It's bad.
I think it's important for our neighbors to understand the AE environs rules.
AE2 and-
AE2. That actually is, has to do with the FAA, and I'm sure this is Department of Defense at this point, prevents us from being able to develop that residentially. They have control over that. If we attempted to do it, even if this commission approved it, the FAA supersedes that and says we cannot do that. So, it's just important for us to understand that, that limitation. Are there other questions from commissioners?
I'm not really keen on the illegal mining operation. And having us make it legal, you know, I don't-
They do, yeah, they have the permits from the state. It wasn't made aware that it was, I mean, since they did get the state permits, and they also submitted their restoration plan and everything, it was under the impression that they were operating legally. Now that zoning has become an issue, we're here to correct that.
Right.
And we are also agreeing to those conditions for that specific use unit to ensure that there are adequate buffers between surrounding area and surrounding dwellings, I should say, and also property lines.
Yeah, because I know we got another one in the area that's been kind of a sore spot for a lot of people. And it's on Post Road as well, just north of there, by the highway.
Well, maybe this will incentivize more people to bring their property up to code and be legally conforming.
Well, they're supposed to redevelop that one, so, we'll see.
I have a tough time reconciling, we're going to expand and improve Post and then not expect Post to develop.
Oh, it's going to develop.
Then we can't, we can't approve residential zoning, which I would obviously prefer to.
Yeah.
So, when I think about our job here to put land to its highest and best use, I'm having a hard time going a different way, so.
Council members?
Sir, please, you cannot address the commission from the audience. Okay, questions, comments? We still need a motion.
Okay, we have any TEs on this?
Well, about-
Yeah.
We do have TEs, and that's, that's what I wanted to, they look well thought out and pretty solid TEs, so.
Yeah, and we agreed to all of them.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, like Kamal said, with the development of Post Road coming, this is all inevitable, for sure. There could be a lot more traffic if it wasn't storage.
Right.
Mainly, so, I'm in support of it. Like I said, Seventy-fourth and Post, both of those roads are going to need some major, major help. But I'll move to recommend approval of P.U.D. 2008.
Commissioner Privet moves to recommend approval of P.U.D. 2008 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations as listed in the staff report. That motion's seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. And I would say to our neighbors, again, as I've stated in, previously in this meeting, you still have an opportunity to be heard at the City Council, and I would encourage you to do so. I would encourage you to reach out to your City Council person about that. We're now in line for item 19.
Item 19 is a resolution recommending to the City Council approval of this class and corridor revitalization project plan to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I want to hear this. I've heard part of it already, but I do want to hear it, but I need to take a break. So, could we take five minutes, maybe?
Sure. Okay. We're going to take, sorry, Kenny. We're taking five minutes. We're going to stand at ease for five minutes. Thank you. going to stand at ease for five minutes. Thank you. Yeah, okay, we're, thank you. Okay, everyone, thank you so much for your patience as we were needing to take a break quickly. I know we've been here a while, so we're going to do our best to move expeditiously. I was reminded that there is a tip off at eight thirty. So, okay. Did we read the, did we read in item nineteen into the record? Great. Kenny?
Kenny Soodle, the Alliance for Economic Development. I'll be very quick on this. So today, we're coming before you is a resolution related to the creation of a brand-new tax increment financing district, the Class and Corridor Revitalization Project Plan. So very quickly, in the Local Development Act, one of the things that's required is that we bring any proposed new TIF or major changes in front of the Planning Commission to review it, make, you know, consideration that it's in conformance with a comprehensive plan. So we've done that, we're going to run very quickly through that, but I'm also going to give you some other detail about it as well. So when we were working on this, and this started very, a long time ago, started working with the Asian District Cultural Association, looking at their area, started working with the Planning Department, did a very extensive parcel-by-parcel analysis, and really started looking at this whole area that, and I'll show you maps here in just a second, but, you know, kind of going from the Asian District all the way down to, you know, basically the school admin building into midtown. There were several different things that came together, and all of these really worked together to conform with the comprehensive plan. And these are the objectives that are in the project plan, and that's promote economic development, improve sales tax revenues, improve property values, retain and create jobs. These are all things, I think, playing with lots of things in Plan OKC, lots of things in Strengthen OKC, preserve and rehabilitate historic structures and landmarks. We've got a couple of really important historic structures in this area, in the proposed area, the Gold Dome being one of them, the school admin building being another. Encourage transit-oriented development along the B R T line. So as we looked at this, the B R T comes down Classen, and it makes a turn and goes into midtown, so we started looking at opportunities around that. And then also to prioritize affordable housing. So all these things, whether it's connect OKC, enrich OKC, live OKC, there's different elements, I think, that this covers in the comprehensive plan. So very quickly, we have to set a budget in that project plan, so it's our estimate over the next twenty-five years of the increment that could be generated here. We've laid out that, you know, the majority of this, and sixty-eight million is really a kind of a midpoint estimate of what we looked at, all the different parcels that we're proposing to put in, what they might develop, looked at the different areas. And so this is really where we ended up. Forty million of that, and really fifty, is to do assistance and development financing. We're going to have to assist the projects that are in this area to happen. The majority of the lots that we have here are undeveloped lots. Twenty percent of them are publicly owned lots. They're around three hundred-ish parcels that don't, that have, I think they're only generating about a million-two in taxes, so it's about a four thousand dollar per parcel average, and these are primarily commercial parcels. So that gives you an idea of the lack of development on what we're proposing here. So the majority of this is probably going to have to go back into assisting projects to happen. We wanted to specifically carve off a call-out for affordable housing. That doesn't preclude that, you know, all of it could go towards projects that have affordable housing, but we want to specifically call that out and reserve a piece for that. Public improvements and development at ten million, and then other taxing jurisdictions at eight million. So here's your map, and as a reminder, the, I don't know, what do you call that? Magenta line that's on the outside is, that's the project area, the proposed project area that, it's got a lot of different boundaries, but Northwest Thirty-Sixth at the north, Robinson's the farthest east, Penn's the farthest west, I believe it's Northwest Six, there's a little piece on the south that goes down. That's the area where the funds can be spent. The actual properties where the increment will be generated are the other different colored shaded areas. So we propose to break this really into four different increment areas so that we can activate them at different times. There's a little bit different nature between some of these increment areas. So the green is really sort of the main part of the Class and Corridor, really starting at around Thirty-Fourth Street and coming down. That's increment area A. B is the little yellow piece, that's the Gold Dome. We want to be able to activate that and tackle that one independent of everything else, because it's a very unique property. C is the blue property, primarily that is Northwest Tenth Street property, the north side of it, that is owned by the city, and the city has, we're in the process of working to potentially develop that with the city. It also includes the school admin building. And then D, in the red, are the pieces that are really kind of the midtown area pieces that are around the B R T line. And again, we tried to be very surgical and selective here, worked with the Planning Department, they did a lot of statistical analysis, tried to really only pull in things that are undeveloped, underdeveloped, publicly owned, those sorts of things. If you'll go to the next one, this is just a map with land use topologies to really just show the different types that are here in the comprehensive plan. These are congruent with what we're proposing here. So you see that there's the transit-oriented urban medium intensity, urban medium, the downtown, the commercial corridor. Those are all things that are, this TIF district would facilitate happening. So again, another piece of evidence that this conforms with the comprehensive plan. So what action are you being asked for today? The resolution would be that you are making a recommendation to City Council, and that there's findings within this plan that this conforms to the master plans, how it's quoted in the Local Development Act. So if that happens, this would move forward to City Council. And on the next slide, very quickly, so this is just to give you a timeline of the process. We started with, we had a community meeting for Ward Two and Six, which are the primary areas of this, on April sixteenth. The TIF Review Committee was formed by council. They met, reviewed this on May second, so they've already unanimously recommended moving this forward. It's here today. With your approval, it would go to City Council for introduction on June fourth and consideration on June eighteenth. So if you move it forward, City Council's the next step. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kenny. I do have a question. Can we go back to the slide that has the different districts, the A, B, C, D?
Mm-hmm.
So what does that practically mean for how the money is spent? Does that mean you're limited to only benefiting those parts, or how does that work?
Great question. Dollars that are generated in any of the, any of those increment districts can be spent anywhere in the larger project area.
Okay.
So it's not limited to just certain areas. Those are really just giving us a tool to kind of, we kind of looked at it and said that generally speaking, there's, you know, really these three different areas, and then the Gold Dome's a fourth, that we'd like to be able to activate them at different times as development starts happening in those different kind of sub-areas.
Okay. Is that a chronological A, B, C, D, or is that not to be determined?
Not, I mean, I would tell you no. In fact, you know, for example, there's, I believe it was approved yesterday, the redevelopment agreement is in place on the school admin building. So, you know, that's a project I know for sure is moving forward, and all the proposals on that need help. We've got three proposals, and so that's one that's moving forward. So it's possible that, you know, C might get activated first, so it's not necessarily chronological. But until we really have projects that are ready to move, we won't really know until we get to that point.
Okay. Other questions from commissioners? I think we're just looking for a motion from Commissioner Powers or Goveen.
One quick technical thing. Thank you for your reminder. So we did have one in the project plan, I believe it's Exhibit J. There was a map, there's a whole bunch of maps in your project plan. We had to switch that out because the Luda map had changed with the Planning Department made some changes to it, and we didn't get the updated one in. So I need the motion to recommend including the new Exhibit J that is in your, I believe it's been handed out, correct?
I get it. I don't know if I got it, but, okay. Oh, this one, okay.
Well, I'll move to recommend approval, including Exhibit J, of the, I'm looking for the right word here, the.
The new TIF.
Class and Corridor TIF. To adopt the resolution. Ah, gosh, I lost my page here.
Commissioner Goveen moves to recommend adoption of the resolution, recommending the City Council approve the Class and Corridor Resolution Project Plan.
That's it.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
With the new Exhibit J.
With the new Exhibit J. And the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're now in line for item twenty.
Item twenty is P C one zero nine one three, application to rezone seventy-two-hundred North Santa Fe Avenue from R one to A A.
Timothy Beetz, twelve thirteen North Classen, here for the Bowman's. Mr. Bowman had put together some little packets, if y'all would like to see them, says information about what I'm going to talk to you about. What we're requesting today is a rezoning of the Bowman's property. It's approximately ten acres. There is seventy-two-hundred North Santa Fe. The property's been in the family for quite some time. Mr. Bowman's been on it for about sixty-five years himself. It was originally farmland. It was rezoned to R one. There is one residential dwelling on it, some accompanying buildings that go with it. The plan that the Bowman's have is they want to turn this back into a self-sustaining farm, the main purpose of that being where they're going to serve the Asian community with Asian vegetables, meats, different things. There's a pond on the property. The benefits that we see of having this switched over back to A A is it's going to maintain the groundwater runoff around the area, which is important. The property that you talked about earlier with the cement production facility is directly to the northeast of this property. The, our water flows off of our property towards that. There is a drainage ditch that runs along the north side. There's a lot of large old-growth trees on the property. We want to take it back to agricultural, leave those trees there, work around it. Basically, the idea that the Bowman's have is by putting it back into a farm-type environment, they want to have sheep, grains. We also, we'd originally wanted to do an apiary for bees, but as part of that, we've realized that now we can, we have the land, we have the uses, that if we can make this self-sustaining, that the apiary is going to allow, you know, the repollinization of the plants, the vegetables, things like that. We can then feed the animals, we can raise the grain there, we can take care of them. It's not going to be a large commercial operation, basically, it's going to be to serve the Asian community. The most Asian markets get their produce within twenty miles of where the store is located, and there are several Asian markets in the Asian District on Classen that they've already been speaking with about providing services to them. We think that in reliance with the comprehensive plan, that putting it back to agricultural is going to be the best use of this property. To the south, we have commercial property. There is a golf course that's been approved to the east. You have several sporadic industrial areas around it. There is not served by water or sewer for the city, so the property is important to be self-sustaining, and it wouldn't make any sense to try and develop this as an R one facility without the infrastructure there. So we just ask the Planning Commission to approve this to the rezoning to A A.
Okay. Thank you. I do have, I mean, your purpose is outstanding. I'm in total agreement with that. I think it's great. My concern is about compatibility, because I know that we have approved, this area has turned major industrial and commercial everywhere around you. And now you're asking to turn down the zoning, and that gives me pause. But I'm curious about this. For this purpose, all these things, can they not be done in R one? Will it require A A?
We couldn't have livestock, sir.
You couldn't have livestock, but you can do the farming, right? So is that the only issue? Like, I'm wondering, like, when I saw an apiary and I thought they can't, I would assume that the method to ensure we got that used.
I'm going to have to look, I haven't seen that, so I'll, I'd like to look at it real quick, but the difference is personal animal raising. When we looked at it, we weren't sure if their intent would be achieved by doing it in A A, and if, and what we thought their intent was, could potentially be done already in R one. So our recommendation was to make sure that they could do exactly what they wanted after going through the rezoning process. The staff's recommendation was a P U D.
So you're not even convinced they can do what they want to do with A A?
I need to, well, I need to see what this handout is. I haven't seen that.
I'm sorry.
It speaks to a sheep farm, a sheep ranch.
Okay. So, maybe off base, but handing out this much stuff, I was a little uncomfortable with already, right at the beginning of a long meeting, if Sarah has to look at this, I hate for Rush to do it, is this appropriate to act on something when we were just handed this? I'm fine if y'all want to keep waiting, but.
And that was just an overview of kind of their plan of what they want to do, not the specifics. There's not specific areas on the property yet determined what it would be. It's going to have to be worked around the existing pond. There is the drainage, large drainage ditch to the north. It limits kind of what you can do and where you can do.
Right. It's either relevant or not relevant. I'm like, either I don't want it, or I want time to look at it.
Sure.
I don't want the staff to have to be told to, hey, look through this real fast and maybe get it right, or maybe get it wrong.
Sure.
Especially if, especially if you can already do what you want.
Well, with an R one, I think we'd be prohibited from several of the matters that we want. There's livestock would be prohibited, since it's going to be for commercial purposes, There's livestock will be prohibited, since it's going to be for commercial purposes, there would be some limitations there. The staff did recommend a SPOUD if we were just going to do the apiary. But once they decided yes, they're getting ready to retire from their respective positions. Mr. Bowman's been a pharmacist since 1977. Mrs. Zane is a teacher, she's got a degree in physics. But they're getting ready to retire. They want to turn this into kind of their retirement idea of, you know, growing a farm and serving the Asian community, so.
Again, totally in support of the purpose, just trying to make sure we can do the right thing to make sure it fit. I'm concerned because, again, this area is all turning office, all turning commercial. You're surrounded by industrial zoning. You're aware of that as well, too. So I don't want us to, again, be back in this situation where we're boxed in. We're creating a scenario where most of the property around it is industrial, commercial, moving to office. I'm sure you've seen the rest of everything along the east side of Broadway Extension in this area, has all been going that direction. Then we plop a farm in the middle. And so that concerns me without us doing an SPUD where we could really narrowly define and even protect the area around you. I think we should, where are we commissioners? Am I alone on this?
No, I think at minimum, we
Yeah. PUD.
And even then, I'm not 100% sure we can get there.
Yeah, I think you're right. If you just look at this, this is a very strange place to put something like this. I mean, it's industrial, it's commercial, and it's moving in that direction. I mean, it's not, it's already well-established, but I mean, there's more and more and more coming. So it's, it's a little perplexing. We so often find ourselves in situations where things have kind of built up around these kind of uses, and we feel bad for those people. And if there was only something that we could do to help them, it seems odd to be put in the position of asking to permit it, you know, in an area that's so inconsistent with its use.
I'm pretty sure we just expanded to the east of this. I thought we just approved, within the last few months, we approved more industrial to your, to your east.
Correct.
For those reasons, I was thinking, that's why a PUD is more appropriate. Because it's specific to the use. You know what you're getting into, you can have that conversation, but...
How do you feel about taking two weeks and considering a PUD?
We can do that.
Okay. Okay. Let's, well, I support that. I'm happy to help you with that process, if there's anything I can do.
Do we need, do we need longer than two weeks?
We're going to decide whether he wants
Oh, June 13th. Could you do June 13th?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I can't make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to continue this item to the June 13th meeting.
Okay. The motion from Commissioner Claire is to continue item 20 for the purpose of hopefully establishing a PUD. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes.
Do you want to give these back to him for June?
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
If I can help.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We're now in line for item 21.
Item 21 is a petition requesting the annexation of the east half of Section 33, Township 12, North Range 6 West, Canadian County, a tract of land approximately 320 acres to the City of Oklahoma City, located west of Gregory Road and south of Northwest 10th Street.
They're working at our presentation, but I'm Amanda Carpenter, 522 Cold Cold Drive. I represent the Oklahoma City Industrial and Cultural Facilities Trust, which is a City of Oklahoma City public trust. With me today is Kenton Sudal, the general manager of the city's trust, as well as president of the alliance, and Jeff Seymour, the vice president of economic development for the Oklahoma City Chamber. Okay, so this is a request for annexation of 320 acres into Ward Three. Next slide. As stated in the staff report, April 9th, the annexation committee met, and it was chaired by Councilwoman Barbara Peck. They voted unanimously to forward on this process of annexation to the planning commission, and then ultimately, this would go on to city council for decision-making. The committee members of that annexation committee included the chairwoman, Barbara Peck, Councilman Carter, Councilman Stone, and Councilman Stone Cypher. Before you today, you'll see in the red box, which is the 320 acres that's being asked to annex into Oklahoma City. This is 100% owned by the city's trust. No one currently lives on this property, and nor have they for many, many, many years. This property has been used for agricultural purposes in the past, and currently has industrial uses on the property. This city, this purchase was made by the city's trust with the funds that were allocated by city council and OCEDT for use as a mega site. On the left, you'll see the 320 acres in relation to the surrounding property and its prime location close to CE Page Airport. On the right, you'll see the map showing the city limits of the City of Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City is the only adjacent and contiguous municipality, meaning the only city that could annex this property into its limits. It is unincorporated currently. It is unincorporated property. There is no county zoning regulation, so it does not have current zoning. It is, there is no county building permit process, no permit process whatsoever. There's no other formal process to go through for permission to annex this property into the City of Oklahoma City. It is this process that we're asking today. To be clear, the property per the Oklahoma City ordinances would come in as AA agricultural zoning. At this time, the request is simply for annexation. This is not a zoning matter, like many of the cases you've seen before you today. The zoning will be handled as a separate application, once a mega site user has been Some pictures of the property. The one on the left is looking north from Reno Avenue. The one on the right is looking southwest from Northwest 10th. You'll see it's contiguous and flat, which makes it great as part of a mega site. I identified that there's some current industrial uses on the property. On the northwest corner, there is a natural gas compression station. That natural gas compression station would continue to operate, just as it has for many years. In the vicinity, there are other industrial uses. There's the CE Page Airport, which I previously described. There's also a trucking company and a chemical manufacturing and blending company. That's all within, if you were to drive south on I-40 on Simmeron Road, over to Reno, Reno over to Banner Road, and then up to Northwest 23rd. In addition to these uses, there's also an event center in the area. And there are seven oil and gas-related facilities in that surrounding area. Now, I explained that this property, this 320 acres was acquired to become part of the bigger mega site, which, the majority of which is already in Oklahoma City limits. And a mega site is a site that is 1,000 acres or more. Oklahoma City is a growing market. Many manufacturing and industrial companies are interested in Oklahoma City because we have a great quality workforce, because we have a low cost of doing business, and our colleges and VOTECs can provide specialized trainings to these types of businesses. And then lastly, they're interested in us because we have great amenities for our Oklahoma City residents, which is thanks to planning commission and city council. Nevertheless, despite having all these wonderful qualities, we are missing out because we don't have a mega site. So this is the City of Oklahoma City's attempt to put together a mega site. At this point in time, the 320 acres that we're here discussing today is outside those city limits. To be competitive, we need this mega site. And since 2020, Oklahoma City has been a candidate for nine different businesses seeking 1,000 acres or more, but has not had such a site, so we've lost out on those opportunities. As pointed out by the staff report, Plan OKC recognizes the need for the 1,000 acres development sites, both in its purpose and process chapter, as well as its Strengthen OKC initiative. City council understood the need for a mega site when it identified and allocated $10 million for the acquisition of this property. A mega site will bring industrial and manufacturing business to Oklahoma City, and that type of development creates projects that allow for anywhere from 2,500 to 7,500 new jobs for the Oklahoma City metro. These types of jobs have an average wage of $63,000. And bringing these new-to-market businesses diversifies our economy and supports the Plan OKC Strengthen Initiative. These types of developments also bring billions of dollars in capital investments, plus supporting businesses that locate in the Oklahoma City metro, which increase the metro tax base, as well as increase the school, the local schools' tax base. So why annex this property? First, it meets all of the statutory requirements. This is adjacent and contiguous to the City of Oklahoma City. It is 100% owned by the city's public trust. It is only this 320 acres that we are asking to be annexed, no other property. Second, Oklahoma City will receive the full benefit of a mega site development if this property is annexed in, especially since city funds were used to acquire this property. And third, by annexing this property in, the development will provide more protections because the current property, where it sits, an unincorporated county property, does not have zoning regulations, does not have building permit regulations. So by bringing it into Oklahoma City, we are submitting this development to the regulations that would be applicable from the City of Oklahoma City. Now, this really is a community development, it's a community benefit. So a mega site development would provide a potential increase in CE Page, which would provide for further enhancements of that airport. It would also provide for an increased tax base to banner schools without increasing the student count, unlike if someone was to put a residential development in this 320 acres. As identified in the staff report, the mega site will require improvements to water and sewer. We understand that, we are aware of that, we have researched that. Those improvements will be done as part of the development, once a mega site's user is selected. That information will come back to you at that point in time. Annexation allows for the city to have the tools to better provide those improvements, either on their own or to the potential mega site user. And then also, similar to the utilities, the roads in the area must be improved for better access in and around the site, and this will be done as part of that development. So this is about jobs, and this is about economic development. Why do we do economic development? We do it to create better communities. We do it to create good jobs that can provide income to individuals and families. Those good jobs provide an ability to pay for housing, for food, for recreation, for education. Those good jobs make it possible for our children to potentially stay in Oklahoma City, rather than leave for jobs in other markets. Those good jobs reduce crimes, and they also increase tax base for not only municipalities to provide local services like roads, police, fire, parks, but they also provide increased tax base to schools. And this is why the chamber and the alliance and the City of Oklahoma City continue to promote economic development. It provides a better quality of life for the entire Oklahoma City community. So we're asking for you today to recommend approval of the annexation petition and move on to city council. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Okay, first question. You made this point, but I want to, I want to get clarity on it. If we were to, if the commission was to recommend approval of this, and it was subsequently approved, this annexation was subsequently approved by the city council, it would be zoned automatically as AA, correct?
Correct. It's agricultural property.
And I'm assuming that AA would not be appropriate for any of the developers who would want to use this mega site?
That is correct. A mega site development would require different zoning.
And so when that zoning, rezoning occurs, you'd have to publicly notice it?
Correct.
And then we'd have a public hearing?
Correct.
Just like we did all day for the last three, four hours now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to be clear about that. So if we vote yes today, and then it's approved by the city council, we are not creating an industrial site?
You are not creating industrial sites, simply by annexation.
We are creating an agricultural site, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to be clear. Questions from commissioners? Okay, let's hear from our neighbors. First, we'll hear from Mark, I'm assuming that's Rubes. I apologize if I got it wrong. Rubus, I apologize. Mark?
You have to turn it in.
Oh, okay, you'd like him to go first? That's totally fine. Please, come on up.
I represent
That's great. Happy to have you here. Give us your name and address for the record.
Andrew Haruz, 1219 Classen Drive. I represent actually Mark's sister, Deborah, and her husband Lance Brown.
Excellent.
I did file written objection, which details quite a lot of concerns that my clients have. It's lengthy, and I don't believe I'm going to be able to address every one of the points in a five-minute span, so I would definitely ask that all the commissioners read through that. I'm going to try and highlight some of the high points here, though. My clients live in farm approximately half a mile from the proposed site at 15500 West Reno. While it's our understanding exactly of what's being asked for today, of only an annexation to be agricultural, it is clear in intent this is going to be heavy industrial, so let's not confuse that. A mega site will require an I-3 zoning or something similar with respect to any kind of PUD. That simply does not match with what's next to it. Further, I'm a little confused, based on what I just heard from this carpenter. Is there another 680 acres adjacent to this 320 acres that the city owns? Because that wasn't disclosed, and I didn't see that based on the property records that I found. So if that can be answered, that can avoid some of our arguments.
We'll certainly ask her to come back up after you're finished, and we've heard from our neighbors, and she can address
And I'll try and short-circuit that part of it, but if, if there is not, then this site is not something that should be considered for a mega site. By the city's own words, it's supposed to be approximately 1,000 acres of developed or developable land, and that just clearly is not. I would like to yield or reserve some time to address that. I don't want to spend a lot of time in the event that there is
We'll give you that chance.
Thank you. The other issue here, and I think this is something that's clear, and it's been presented and considered quite a lot by this planning commission, is we have an issue with overextension and sprawl. These are problems, and all we're doing is extending our city even further. If we're able to pull up my objection, I've got some exhibits showing that this is 18 miles from downtown. This is an issue that was addressed, oversprawing, I mean, overextension and sprawl were issues that were addressed a year and, a year and three or four months ago to this planning commission on a separate issue, where we were just looking at R1 development. And this planning commission denied that application. And nothing has changed, but we looked through the exact same problematic items of water and sewer utilities are not served out here. Fire and police are underserved. Roads are a very large issue. And so what is it going to cost if we're going to develop something that's 18 miles away? And if we look at, again, I would appreciate if we could pull up either my objection or the staff report.
We're going to check with staff to see if we can.
The staff report shows these as, I mean, their own words, we show that You can just scroll to the first page. Am I able to control this? Am I able to control this from this mouse? It doesn't look so. We can scroll. I don't mind going through the staff report or my objection. Another page, well, it's going really fast. Yes, ma'am, if, if you'll go back to the top of the staff report. We'll want page... Five is where we can begin. What we're showing is that this is undeveloped land all around. If you can scroll to the, take it to the next page. Excuse me. Page nine. If you look, these red sections are actually showing it's not efficient to serve. This is the proposed annexation and our water utilities. I mean, the city is showing that, or the staff report is showing that for two and a half or three miles of land, that water utilities are not efficient to serve. If you'll scroll to the, or go to page 10, is it somewhere map for sewer? And again, three miles, we're talking about it not efficient to serve. These are issues that are simply just not addressed by the staff report. We, we state that they're not efficient to serve, but what is the plan? There are suggestions that we can get water from the Canadian County Rural Water, or Water Authority, but there's no real clear understanding of what that petition process looks like and what a potential outcome would be. There's discussion about having to use, the, the city would have to service the sewer utilities, but no suggested or estimated cost of what that's going to be. We get into fire and police concerns. Again, this is, if you'll go to page 11. City outlines that there are issues that approximately four and a half miles is where the closest fire station is. It's an, it's underserved, and there's not the infrastructure here. And if we're going to try and develop this, what is the cost going to be to develop it? Lastly, are the roads issues? Again, this was presented to you in January of 2023, similar arguments that the roads are underdeveloped, that they are not well-maintained. I believe, based on the special meetings from earlier today, it was presented, there was a cost analysis that was presented to the commission about examples of infrastructure costs per mile. Does this look familiar? Was this presented around earlier today? As part of a traffic study?
Okay.
These estimates for road widening are six to 11 million dollars per mile, signalizing an intersection is 300 to 500,000 dollars. Again, what is the cost going to be in order to develop this site? And I continue to bring this up because the city's own memorandum that was presented in December of 2023 clearly requires for these economic development mega sites to be 1,000 acres of land that is development-ready. And again, I'm not really sure this is 1,000 acres, and I definitely don't believe it's development-ready. I just don't think this is appropriate to be an economic development mega site as it sits today. Then we get into how this is just wholly inconsistent with the city's plan. Plan OKC, as we all are aware, and we've been hearing for several hours today, this commission is meant to strongly consider Plan OKC's LUTs and this agricultural preserve overlay that is directly adjacent. I think we can all agree that if this land, the proposed site, had it been in the city limits in 2015, when the overlay was placed, it would have been a part of agricultural preserve. There's nothing else that would have shown that it would be anything other than agricultural preserve. I will, if you'll give me just a second, I'll give you the page number. If you'll go to page seven, please. This is again a portion of the staff report, and I know it can be a little difficult to see, but if you look what pretty much every single thing that's adjacent to this property is all agricultural preserve, the only industrial is the airfield, which was, I believe it was a World War II airfield, so it's predating much of the develop, I mean, much of the consideration here. No other industrial, and that is not I-3, what we're talking about for a economic development mega site. So the lack of consistency between 1,000 acres, 1,000 development-ready acres, and consideration of the Plan OKC's comprehensive plan are other further reasons why this should be denied. And why are we annexing something in? I understand it would be zoned agricultural, but all we're doing is just leading this thing to a rezoning issue that frankly, I think we can look at this right now and shows that it does not fit the surrounding area. Oklahoma City is large enough as it is, we're just creating more of these problems that this planning commission has addressed in several other instances. I know that I have a lot of residents and neighbors, and I believe they want to speak to really the first portion of my written objection, which is the impact that it's going to have, the change on them. I think they're better suited to speak to that than I am, but for them to speak to the change in rule character that a site like this will have. But I do want to hand one thing out to you all, and. And what this is, while it's being handed out, is just a side-by-side comparison. And it's taking the staff report that was presented to the planning commission in January 2023, and comparing that to the staff report for today's annexation in this site. And to remind you, the question before the planning commission in January of 2023 was trying to amend the comprehensive plan and the use associated with a much smaller site for just one to two acre residential lots. The planning commission went, or the staff went through this, and they addressed the water issues, they addressed the wastewater issues, they addressed the emergency services issues. And they've made a recommendation for denial, and this planning commission followed that recommendation for denial. You can see the title of this exhibit, it is "What's Changed." They're making the exact same findings in water, wastewater, and emergency services. I understand there's now a recommendation to approve annexation, but when we get to the point of rezoning, I, I just think that it's hypocritical if we're going to look at this in a different fashion. So I would ask this planning commission to remain consistent with its prior rulings, to abide by the comprehensive plan. And again, if, in the event that this site doesn't meet what an economic development mega site is required to have, this should not be annexed into the city of Oklahoma City.
Thank you, Mr. Haruz. And I did give you more flexibility, because I always believe in making sure if the community has a, has a voice, a collective voice to speak for them, I would like to hear from that. I would ask that your neighbors, I know we have a lot of people signed up to speak, and so we do want to avoid any repetitious comments, we just want to hear complimentary comments for you. I will give you a chance to rebut after we get some of our questions answered from Amanda, so I'd just ask that you, our neighbors, be respectful of that time, that I'd like to continue to give to you that flexibility, so that we can, we can hear clearly from the whole argument. It's easier for us to hear from one person telling us all the arguments than we hear a lot of different cases, and it can be a little bit more tough for us to deal with. So if you are a neighbor that feels that Mr. Haruz has done an excellent job representing your opinion, when I call your name, you can just say I'm giving my time to him, because it'll make it easier for us to give him more flexibility to respond to some of the things that may be said later.
And I did make an attempt of speaking with three of the neighbors to try and tailor our arguments to where we're not just duplicating everything.
Yeah, and I appreciate it. And again, it's great, good, these are good things to, to hear, too.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Rubus.
I think it'd be fair for those here on the Banner half, I've been here a long time, just so you know who's here. I don't know if I'm being repetitive or not, I agree with everything he says plus more. I come from a family out there, I've been out there forever. But I stand here today with a heavy heart on behalf of the Banner community. Our close knit community is facing a grave threat from the Oklahoma City Industrial and Cultural Facilities Trust that could forever change the landscape out there. As a longtime resident Banner, myself and other long-term farming families in the audience today proudly sustain this area for over 135 years. I'm deeply troubled with the prospect of losing our community, family farms, homes, and businesses. It's disheartening to witness the encroachment of industrial development into our midst, threatening to disrupt every essence of what we hold dear. The thought of being displaced from our rural settings, our first, into an industrial park goes against everything we hold dear. I'm also asking you to take into consideration families and their young children living in the neighborhoods, just a stone's throw away that this industrial move will demolish. Have you ever heard anybody say, hey, call your realtor, I want to live by a mega site? I bet none of you would. As I went through the week preparing for this, my mind kept thinking of this. It's like a bully you went to school with when you're trying to have a friendly get-together, and the bully's not invited, because there's always chaos and disruption. Well, this is our community. This bully, you're not invited here. Pinnacle Consulting Management Group was contacted by the Alliance, basically chaos-ing, causing chaos, anxiety, uncertainty, and not to mention relentless hassling to the target markets of the proposed property and site. As I stand here today, it seems to be like a no-brainer that the policies outlined in this Plan OKC, Oklahoma, Oklahoma City Agricultural Protection Policy, which is meant to safeguard agricultural areas surrounding Oklahoma City, are seemingly being disregarded. The promises made to protect our way of life seem to be nothing more than words on paper, as industrial development encroaches upon our community with little regard for the impact it will have on our livelihoods. What's happening to us? Last but not least, this pertains to the Forehand Cemetery. It's a place steep in history, final resting place of numerous souls. Seventy-six to be exact. It is already located on the airport property in what is called the buffer zone in the Plan Oklahoma City area. They should be heard as well. Forehand Cemetery holds within its ground not only the remains of our loved ones, but also the stories and memories. Its origins date back, recorded back August 8th, 1893, when Mr. Forehand generously transferred two acres of land for the purpose of the graveyard and a church. The earliest marked burial site is one of Norcom Tremble, who died there January 3rd, 1891. If you read the story from Philip Gamble Tremble Farms, which is right across the street from the purchased 320 acres, that was his grandmother's brother. And that family purchased the 160 acres that he's, is currently going to build a house on that could be destroyed by the mega industrial site. His letter is a great testament to this area. This also serves as a poignant reminder that the history of the lives intertwined with this land. Among the names, so what is the fate of that cemetery as well? What are we going to do with those bodies that are in direct line? Among the names of the families, individuals who have walked in the same community as we do, one family, the Ratcliffe family, suffered the devastating loss of six infants. Floyd Ratcliffe, born March 2nd, 1913, passed away May 9th, 1913. Leota Ratcliffe, born May 18th, 1914, made it to February, 1915. And there's a third child, and there's three infants that only have a headstone but no name. My great-grandparents, Vakler and Julia, Rubus, Czech immigrants, are buried out there. Anyway, in conclusion, I respectfully urge you to vote against the annexation of 320 acres to our community. As you're aware, this decision holds significant weight, not only for present, but for the future of our community, as well with the community rumbling that reelections are coming soon. By voting against this annexation, you make profound statement about where you stand on critical issue affecting all of us. This decision is not merely about lines on a map or bureaucratic procedures, it's about the fundamental values that uphold this community. It's about demonstrating that all our voices, that our lives matter, and our well-billings, our well-being are not expendable commodities, and that the places we call home hold intrinsic value that cannot be ignored or dismissed. On the other hand, a vote in favor of this annexion would signal a disregard for voices and concerns of our community. It would suggest that our lives, well-being, and even very homes have consequence of the face of bureaucratic agendas and political expenditures. It would betray the trust and confidence that we have placed in our representatives to uphold the common good, to advocate for our best interest. I implore you to remember the community whose lives hang in the balance, whose futures are directly impacted by the choices you make. Think about the families who built their homes here, farmers, ranchers, backbone that formed this community, and the generations yet to come to deserve a vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Deborah Braun or Brown, I apologize.
Hi, I'm Deborah Brown. I live at 15500 West Reno. That was my brother that just spoke. So if you look at where the little red box is at 320, the family farm is west and north of that. I live Oklahoma City Limits to the east and south on Reno, okay? My parents, my mother just died a year ago, so my, and my dad died in 2012. That farm has been in our family since 1949, when my grandma and grandpa bought it from the Finley family. My brother has taken over that farming and has, he has raised cattle, so that farm that's off of Banner Road to my property, he runs cattle back and forth. That 320 acres, the family that owned that and sold that to the Alliance, over here, they're predators, okay? Because of the, I spoke to him on the phone, and that 320 acres is not 1,000. They can't disclose to me because of confidentiality of what that's supposed to be. So that tells me you can't tell me what is going to go in there, that you know. Or maybe you don't know, maybe you're just trying to do a money grab. But let me go back to my, my point. That 75-year tradition of that family farm that's on Banner Road was my grandparents'. The land that I live on is my great aunt's land, who was a sister to my grandfather. They purchased that property in 1947, April 16th. She farmed also, they had wheat, they had barley, my grandpa farmed that land. My aunt also worked at Cimron Field Airport, which is now Clarence E. Page. They built their own houses, they farmed. And on that property, on those two properties that we're talking about, I have mowed, I have disc ground, I rode the combines with my grandfather, I fished, I have done those country things. My dad helped my grandfather farm because he had to supplement the income from working at the Bureau of Prisons there in El Reno. So this farmland is not foreign to me. The land that was bought, my grandfather and her, her dad were friends, and so I wish they would have said something to us and the farm families around us, because we would have been interested, because I went to college. been interested. Because I went to college because the farming industry is declining because of the expense of it. And now you're wanting to disrupt more by taking land out of Oklahoma City and moving it west. When I drove out here today, there's tons of vacant buildings. There are 71 industrial parks, at least for sale in Oklahoma City, proper. That's not including the surrounding towns that already have availability to build. If you need 1,000 acres, you don't have it. And so there's land for sale already that could be doing what you want to do. I heard from the chair today say that compatibility with the rural preserve development and, and development of what Oklahoma City is trying to do can be compatible, but this large industrial mega site, what they're wanting to build, is not compatible with farmland, with closing the roads between my house and the farm. I'm still, I'm still working on taking care of that estate. There are not, the road that I live on is not taken care of well. The Simron Road is not taken care of well. The mayor of Oklahoma City has even said on television that because the land area of Oklahoma City is so large, they can't maintain the roads, okay?
30 seconds remaining.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'll just close with this. I want y'all to really consider not annexing this property. In the part of Preserve Oklahoma City, it talks about compatibility, the significant manufacturing company that, the letter I received from the Alliance, this is not compatible with that rural preserve that's out there. So I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Shawna Hurst.
It's Shanna.
Shanna.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am adamantly, oh, I live at 16388 Northwest 23rd Street, El Reno, Oklahoma. I am directly north of this 320 acres. I represent the Hurst family that owns the other 320 acres that is, like I said, directly north of this. So we will be directly impacted. First off, this land was obtained by the family in the land run of 1889. We have farmed this land for 135 years, eight generations. My daughter is currently in school at OSU to continue farming this land and for continued future generations. So what have we done on this land? Well, we raised dairy cattle, beef cattle, wheat, barley, oats. Now, we do not know what this little mega plant's going to be, but do you want your beef cattle, or your bread, or your milk contaminated, whatever pollutants this mega plant might preserve? I'm just saying, we don't know. Also, when we were approached by this group, they said that they needed 1,500 acres for the mega plant, and that they couldn't tell us what it was. Well, we're not selling our land. We're part of that 320, or that 1,500 acres, or 1,000 acres. So again, how are they going to do this when they're not going to be able to acquire the amount of land that they want? As kind of reiterated, the city does not maintain the roads out there. They don't have the infrastructure, they don't have the money. I mean, I'd love to take you down Simron, or Frisco Road between I-40 and 10th Street, take your dentures out, tighten your bra straps, and we'll go right down that road, and I'll show you how great the city does. Also, Oklahoma City Police cannot service that area. They get called, they called Canadian County Sheriff, said, hey, we're two hours out, can you go take care of this? Okay? Now, we're just putting more and more strain on our county, or our Canadian County Sheriff's Office. First of all, this is Canadian County. This is not Oklahoma County, this is not Oklahoma City. This is Canadian County, and the resources, other than the tax revenue for the school, does not come to Canadian County to support anything else. So again, the annexing of this property to Oklahoma City does not make any sense. I mean, again, I'm adamantly opposed to it. Again, we're not selling our land unless they're going to come up with millions and millions and millions of dollars, because I'm going to have to go find farmland, which is hard to obtain now, that I can go out and raise my cattle and my wheat and all those kind of things on. So that's all I have to say. I hope you consider this and, you know, think about how this impacts the farming community out there, which that is what we are. We are a farming community, and that's what we want to stay. We don't want no, you know, Tesla plant or whatever, or Panasonic battery plant out there contaminating our resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Charlie Ria. I apologize if I got the name wrong. Ree.
My name's Charlie Ree. I reside at 260 Single Tree, El Reno. And if you look at your map, the Banner Creek Estate Development is in the southwest corner of the red box. And my wife and I own about over 500 feet of adjacent property to this 320 acres. We moved here in 2017 from Fort Worth, northern Fort Worth to be more specific, and southern Keller area. That area has gone through a great amount of growth. What has that growth brought? It's brought more trouble to the infrastructure, it's brought in extra crime rates, or higher crime rates, taxes went up on our homes, insurance rates went up, and it's supposed, growth is supposed to be great, right? No, that's wrong. And also, I'm offended, really offended, to have somebody blow smoke up my backside and call it a foggy day. That's exactly what's about to go on. All it is, is the first step in acquisition of all of this so-called land for this mega activity. Also, through the court system, a city can actually rule that economic development falls under the criteria of eminent domain, a legal way of stealing your land from you. Bottom line, that's what it is. I worked in the oil and gas industry for over 43 years. I've seen eminent domain used over and over. Why? For economic gain. Pure and simple. And to me, that is just, it's criminal, to be honest. People work hard for their land, they work hard for their family. They want, all they want to do is be happy and make a living. And then you have something like this happen, and it just, you take it away from them. There's nothing good about that. So that's really what I've got to say, and I really hope the city reconsider's what they're going, what they're about to do. It's, it's not a good, it's not a good fit for the city, it's not a good fit for the people who live out here. It's just not good at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Warren Low.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for letting me speak. I feel a little bit like David versus Goliath. Even though I live at 508 North Simron Road, directly across from the airport, I was only, I've never been notified about this initiative. I just heard about it word of mouth last week. I'm an orthopedic surgeon at McBride Orthopedic Hospital. We moved out into the country to raise our five kids. We wanted to get away from the city, we wanted to let our kids run free. And for the last 40 years, that's what we've done. We've got five kids, 13 grandkids, and, but I got a little bit ahead of myself. First and foremost, I'd like to thank each of you for volunteering your time and your patience to serve the residents of our city. We are grateful for your faithfulness and the sincerity with which you carry out your responsibilities. And we know that the things that come before you are not always easy to decide, and that you can't make everybody happy. However, we strongly oppose the petition to annex the 320 acres under discussion. I'm not really with those guys. I'm with the West Yukon Neighbor Association, which is in an adjacent, adjoining area. But we strongly oppose the petition to annex the 320 acres under discussion. Many of the potential problems with annexing this property to begin the development of a large industrial mega site have already been enumerated, namely, absence of water and sewer lines, dilapidated rural roads, adverse environmental impact, effects on the Banner School, and particularly their bus routes, lack of current emergency services. I had a home invasion, called 911, couldn't get Canadian County, Oklahoma City, or Yukon Police Department to come, and I had to confront the people with my own firearm. Anyway, we have, there are going to be alterations to the CE Page Airport, declining residential property values, increased heavy truck traffic on pothole-plagued roads, and contamination of land, water, and air. However, just as important to us are the loss of all the reasons we chose to be there, peace and quiet, and the enjoyment of nature. As early as the land run, our hard-working neighbors moved out into the country to create this neighborhood where they could build a home, raise their children, enjoy God's creation, invest their savings into the land, so they would have something to leave their children. They supported their community, paid taxes, voted, went to church, educated their families, and now their way of life is severely threatened. Even if this property were to be annexed by the City of Oklahoma City, it would still be governed by the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which is designated as Agricultural Preserve. Last year, which has already been referred to, I stood right here before you guys on 112, 2023, and you reviewed a request to change 120-acre tract of land very close to this 320, located at Simron and 10th, across from the airport, to change it from Agricultural Preserve to Rural Intensity Medium. After an extensive 14-page analysis, the Oklahoma City Planning Commission staff recommended denial of the request to remove the Agricultural Preserve Luda Layer. The subsequent vote by the commission was unanimous in denying that request. None of the factors, conditions, issues, or infrastructure have changed in the past 16 months. With all due respect, and I do mean that, if the unanimous wisdom of the Planning Commission last year was that it was inappropriate to rezone 120 acres for family homes, would it not be even more inappropriate to annex this 320 acres as the first building block in a several-square-mile industrial park on land that has been specifically set aside to be preserved for agriculture and farmers? As a physician, I'm well aware of gateway drugs, as everybody else is, whether it's marijuana-
30 seconds remaining.
... or whatever it might be. And this is, annexing this land is simply a gateway, as they've already admitted, to this mega site. The primary function of government is to protect the small and humble against the rich and powerful, and to impartially administer justice. Franklin Delano Roosevelt, our only four-term president, stated, "A nation that destroys its soils destroys itself." And one last thought, who would buy land and build their dream or retirement home across the street from a 24-hour, noisy, lighted industrial complex? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Jim Casbaum. Okay. Next, we'll hear from Angela Casbaum. Okay. Next, we'll hear from Carolyn Lewis.
My name is Carolyn Lewis. I live at 16761 Homestead, which is the Banner Creek Estate, same as Charlie. I just want to share a personal story with you. Back, I was working at home during COVID, and I happened to look out my window, and I saw smoke in my neighbor's yard. And I thought, what in the world? And they were building a barn, and the ambers from the barn fell onto the grass, and that fire, it tore through the back pasture towards that 320 acres. I have never personally fought a fire, but I ran out of my home and did what I could. Charlie, I jumped in his pool to bail water out because there is, they, their hose wasn't hooked up. It took 25 minutes of burn before Yukon Fire Department could show up to even begin to start to put it out. It, it could have cost five people their homes. The person next to Charlie had a tractor, he was home, he got out on his tractor and started fighting this fire. None of us have ever fought fires. We are not firefighters. My shoes melted from stamping the fire out because I didn't know what else to do. So I just want to let you know, this is not the time for Oklahoma City to expand out this way. We are a farming community. My daughters have named a cow in Mark's Field, Bully Idol. Knowing good and well, they may eat that cow because we buy our beef from him. So please, don't annex this property because it'll just be the beginning of something much bigger. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we've reached the end of the people who were signed up to speak. I'll ask Amanda.
I'll begin by answering the question about the total number of acreage that the city has under its control. And let me begin by saying, we are in the process of acquisition, and so there are certain confidentiality requirements that we have in our agreements that I cannot speak to. But what I can tell you is that between the city and its city trusts, we have 1,250 acres under the city control, that a portion of this is the unused and undeveloped portion of CE Page. CE Page will continue to operate. It is not the intent to, to stop using CE Page. In fact, all the existing facilities will remain or be enhanced as part of future development. I also wanted to explain that, as stated in the staff report, staff has identified that the fact that this mega site coming in and bringing in the increased capacity in utilities, bringing in the increased capacity on water and sewer, the increased ability to renovate and make better the roads, will allow for some of these things they've complained about not to be present in their community. This will allow for the increased capacity of utilities, will allow for better roads in the area, will allow for more public service to be provided to this area. I also want to point out that there was some discussion on expansion and really going beyond the means of what is, is possible. The OKC, Plan OKC talks about urban sprawl, and the reason that they say urban sprawl is created is low-density, single-use development. It's the development patterns that, where you have the one single home, where it doesn't, it's not able to pay for increased capacity in utilities. That's not what we're proposing. We would bring in that capacity, we would bring in the funds. Additionally, this type of development, which, we'll get into a lot of this as part of zoning, it's not a proper portion or consideration for annexation. But I do want you to understand, there's funding sources available for industrial that are not available for any other type of development. There are state funds, we are aware of what the costs are, we are aware of how we would obtain the money to develop, to create that infrastructure that is absolutely necessary. And so this is not something that we just threw together. Additionally, the staff report, or excuse me, OKC plan does specifically address the Employment Needs Assessment and Action Plan that was originally done in 2012. And as part of that plan, and which is also included in Plan OKC, it talks about expanding partnerships and teaming with airports, pursuing public purchase and options for key properties that, in fact, it says, at the urban fringe, the city or its partners could acquire rural land in advance of zoning and infrastructure investments that make land more valuable. The plan states, "The Planning Commission and City Council can make an important contribution to our economic future by adhering to the intent of the E L N A A P as it's expressed in Plan OKC," which is exactly what we're asking you to do today by annexing this 320 acres in, which will become part of our 1,250 acre mega site. I'm happy to answer any other questions that I may have missed. Oh, I did want to point out, none of this property has been acquired with eminent domain. These have been negotiated sales. The property that we're asking to be annexed in was acquired from a couple who had the property in their family for many years. I believe they also received this property as part of the land run. They negotiated. We went back and forth on the price. We ultimately agreed to a price closed, just like anybody else would with a normal transaction.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple of questions. Do you have any familiarity with other mega sites across Oklahoma, central of the region?
So I'll tell you, in terms of 1,000 acre mega site, we don't have one. That's why we're here. We're trying to develop that. But we do have a mega site, or what would be considered not a mega site because it's not 1,000 acres, we have a large industrial site, which is OKC 577. It's off of Interstate 240. It is 577 acres that were acquired from CLO. They are being managed by the Oklahoma Industries Authority, which is an Oklahoma County Trust. It's being advertised for manufacturing, industrial uses. It's been extremely successful, and if you'd like more information on that, Mr. Sudal can stand up and speak to the specifics of how those sales have gone.
Commissioner Claire, were you asking about the entire state of Oklahoma?
Well, I'm talking about mega sites in general, so Oklahoma, Texas.
I was thinking the whole state of Oklahoma, if you're familiar with them, like Mid-America and Pryor, or something like that.
So I don't have that information. I looked to both BFF and.
And really, what I was, was trying to get to was, on sites similar to this, you know, is it, how, how often is the entire 1,000 acres developed? Because I believe they need this much land, or they look for this much land, because they need buffer.
Right.
They need distance from surrounding development. So that's just one thing I want to, I want to try to convey or make sure that we're clear on, is that when you hear 1,000 acres, it might not necessarily be, you know, that they're going to develop 1,000 acres all the way to the fence line. So I would just like to have that information and have everyone have that information to under, just have a better understanding.
That's absolutely right, Commissioner Claire. We are putting together a package of 1,250 acres that would be marketed to different manufacturing industry, industrial users, and we would anticipate that there would be buffer from the community. We have worked with and had discussions with engineers that have put together what a site might look like, and we definitely account for some buffer, but until we have a mega site user, we won't be able to specifically identify that. And that would be part of what we would bring back to you as part of the zoning and then the building process.
Yeah, I think that, let's not get ahead of ourselves. This commission does not have the authority to designate a mega site. We are not here to decide where a mega site will go. That is not the question before us today. And I understand our neighbors' concerns about that, but we aren't voting on that. We're voting on whether this 320 acres should be annexed into Oklahoma City, period. We're not deciding about what industrial business will go there. We're not zoning it. We're zoning it AA if we bring it into the, if we annex it. So it's important, while I understand that this is step one in potentially there being a rezoning case, we're not at step two. We're at step one. So the question for the commission, again, is, do we annex this property in? Yes or no?
Sure. Nonetheless, you were being fair there at the end. It is clearly though to make it available for a mega site. We would not be doing this if it wasn't for the purpose of making it available for a potential mega site for step two. So for now, sure, we're just annexing or not. And to correct myself, I Googled it real quick. That Mid-America is 9,000 square miles, or some, 9,000 acres, not just 1,000. The reason I even bring it up, I didn't know if anybody knew, it's still very rural all around it. It's a huge industrial complex, but it doesn't necessarily change everything around it. It, it's near a city center, but it's, it's a lot of jobs, but it doesn't instantly change everything around it. Mid-America's been there a long time, and it's, and it's pretty, I don't know a lot about it, but anyway, maybe nobody here is an expert on it. It's incomparable. It's so large.
But the challenge is, we don't have an end user in mind, and we haven't voted on the zoning yet. So when we get, start getting into hypothetical scenarios about what a development might look like, or what it might be, how it might impact the surrounding community, that's what I'm fearful of, Commissioner La Forge, is we aren't ready to make those assessments yet. At this point, we're only talking about whether to annex this property, and we know that it's step one in building a mega site potentially, but we don't have any of those other specifics. So I'm fearful of us getting in these hypothetical scenarios about impact because we don't know yet.
At the point that we bring in the zoning application, we will bring all of that information to you.
A concern the neighbors might have then is, why don't we wait to annex it until we know what we're trying to zone it to? We say that to developers a lot. We say, how about you tell us the rest of your plans before we move forward? So I'm afraid we do have to speculate on the future. We have to speculate a little bit, otherwise, we're getting ahead of ourselves. So a little speculation is healthy, I think, on their behalf. We've got to worry a little bit about what the future could be.
Why don't we hear from Mr. Hrous for just a minute or two, and then we'll, we'll close out.
And thank you again for the opportunity. Couldn't echo more of what you're saying. Until we have a clear understanding of what this 1,250 acre plan is, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be ruling on this annexation. We stayed about a buffer. Again, I don't see, if we're using the airport as part of this acreage, how a buffer exists with 320 acres that's catty corner to it. So all of this is very unclear. And until all the parties that are pushing this can actually disclose this information, I don't think it's appropriate for this commission to take the first step. It shouldn't delay this process. When they're ready to disclose it, then let's have all the information in front of you so then you can make a determination to annex. Let's do run the hypothetical, though, of if you do annex, if the city does approve an annexation, and then ultimately votes down some type of zoning issue, now we've just expanded the footprint of Oklahoma City with no real plan here. And we already know, and it's already been discussed ad nauseam, that over-expansion is a problem. So I think we're just creating a potential problem that we could avoid, and let's look at everything together. I also just want to express this, and I understand that you've heard a lot from these residents, but the city's argument and the staff referencing the site staff report, that these types of improvements to infrastructure, that falls on deaf ears. These people just told you they don't want this. So the idea that we're pumping all this money into this area, this is not what they want. They specifically moved out here to not have some of the things that the city is wanting to invest in. And I think that just needs to be very clear. We have, I want to also just make it known, we have submitted FOIA requests. Granted, it was only about a week ago, so I'm not trying to criticize any of the departments, but, or the trust or the city council, I mean, excuse me, Economic Development or the trust. However, this is information that we're seeking. We do want to know what the plan is so we can adequately respond, and frankly, I think that's something the Planning Commission should want to know, too. The last thing, well, two, two more points that I just want to make to Ms. Carpenter's. She referenced some material that focused on development of urban fringe. This could not be further away from an urban fringe. There's nothing urban about the surrounding areas of this, so I just think that this should be considered. The last question that I have is, there's a 577 acre development that they referenced, or non-mega site, but a large industrial site? I'd like to know what the surrounding area is. Is that the same as what we're dealing with here? I don't know the answer to that, but I think that's something the Planning Commission should look at. If this is going to be an example of some of the benefits that these mega sites can provide, let's also consider, is it a part of what the Comprehensive Plan is? We're not that far removed from the Comprehensive Plan. And this, I mean, my objection, my written objection, clearly shows that what I-3 is and what it requires could not be any further different from what this residential and agricultural current use is of these properties. In fact, I-3 says that it's to be located downwind and as far away as possible from residential and most commercial uses. We're putting this right next to it. So I just think all of that needs to be considered, and I don't think that we should prematurely vote to annex this property until we have all the information and the plan at hand. Thank you. I'll answer any questions if you have any of us.
Mr. Hrous?
When I say us of the residents.
Go ahead.
Oh, I didn't have a question. I just want to be sure to follow up.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Any, thank you.
Thank you all.
Questions, comments for commissioners before we vote?
Can I segue from my own and from that, and then I'll let the other commissioners speak more? So I want to be clear what I was saying. I was more just addressing how much speculation might be healthy. Because we've said, we're all acknowledging a mega site, we can't just then put blinders on and go, no idea what a mega site might be. I also want to say, though, one of the, one of the, one of the objectors said we're blowing smoke. No, neither the applicant nor the city, nobody's blowing smoke. We are saying it's going to be a mega site. Nobody's lying about that. It is clearly for a mega site. With some healthy speculation on my part, I think of what that might mean. I see some positives that it could be. I see some potential negatives. No doubt, on a step two, when we have clarity, it will be further considered. You guys can believe that the Planning Commission, the City Council, everyone will carefully consider it in that next step. I think the unique circumstance we have here, we all, I think we would agree, the city needs to know they have this possibility so that they can recruit, and then the city will know what it would actually be. Then when we know what it would actually be, I encourage, I know you all will, show back up. I hope you would. You show back up, and then you have your objections to what the specifics are. I am for giving the city the tool to know they could recruit something, and then give the neighbors and ourselves and everyone else the specifics of what we need to know about. Then what will it be? It is, it is, it is tough. Yeah, you recognize something is, something is, if we approve this, something is going to be proposed, hopefully, if the city is successful in recruiting somebody. Then we have a proposal. You didn't, you didn't like that it was the first step. The other problem, the issue is that you're near a large city. You're not in the middle of western Oklahoma where this wouldn't even happen. You'd have your agricultural life. You'd have it quiet and slow. When you're near a city, you need to make available jobs somewhere. If this was on eastern Oklahoma City, they would be upset if it's on western, northern, wherever it is. And unfortunately, we, I do believe we need to make jobs available. I hope that whatever the future proposal is, either it fails if you, if, for your sake, or it is something good enough that succeeds, and then it's a bit of a balance, and that it's not as bad as you might have imagined a mega site, but it also provides jobs to the city and taxes. So it's tough. It's really tough. But this first step, I'll be in favor of moving forward, and then finding out later what, what is it that has been recruited.
I would hope that with, I would hope, excuse me, I would hope that whenever we're considering, excuse me, excuse me, and I understand everyone's passion, I get it. There's nothing more personal that happens in any of the decisions that we make that is than what affects you directly with your home, and I take very seriously our responsibility to, to represent the city. And it's a very significant challenge, and I get it. I, trust me, we just voted on a jail near my ward, so while we're talking about eastern Oklahoma instead of western Oklahoma, so I definitely understand that issue. I think the other thing to think about when we're thinking about projecting into the future of what it might look like. I'm anticipating S P U D P U D, where we'd have the opportunity to have flexibility, where we'd have the opportunity to have a meaningful discussion about mitigation, a meaningful opportunity to have a discussion about impact and how we can make adjustments to identify what may happen. But again, it's still hypothetical. And, and to your point, Commissioner La Forge, if it's not within the city of Oklahoma City, how can we negotiate for a mega site in the first place? So I, I think we've got some more steps to go before we know what the impact ultimately will be. And at this current moment, the question before us again is whether we're going to make this 320 acres a part of Oklahoma City as agriculture. Other questions, comments from commissioners?
I'm going to jump in. This is obviously Ward Three.
Not yet.
I've been told by staff that this annexation is being considered.
It would be, potentially, hypothetically.
Ward Three, so I, this is my area, so I'm going to speak up. I want you guys all to know that it's not that I don't care about your situation, but now's not the time to argue the point. That time's coming, so I'm going to ask you to please stay cordial in this process. This is a, this is a step to approve an annexation to AA, period. And no matter, no matter what comes, you're going to have your day many times to be able to come and speak against it, to have representation. And the, when I put myself in your shoes, and this being in the area of my ward, I'd be more concerned, and you have to think about this, I'd be more concerned about 320 acres sitting out there that's unincorporated, that anybody could do anything they want with no rules, no permits, and you can't shake your head at me and tell me that wouldn't be a concern, because it is, because development is coming. And I'll agree to disagree, but I'm not trying to act like we don't care. We have a, we have a process. The process for today is to approve an annexation that is 100% owned by a foundation that is Oklahoma City. It is completely touching the boundaries of Oklahoma City, and it's coming in as AA. With that said, I'm for recommending it to proceed.
Any further comments from commissioners? Otherwise, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Meek's motion.
I guess I just want to say, you know, one of the most difficult and sometimes frustrating things about this process and this job is, is that you don't always have control of the sequence of events. You know, there are a lot of times when we would like to require more of developers than they're ready to guarantee. They, they can, you know, aspire to comply with our requests, but in terms of getting it, you know, in black and white and that sort of thing, they have to have a certain flexibility in order to be able to bring their development to fruition. And, and sometimes it doesn't always turn out the way you hoped it would, but there are, there are sequences that we don't have control over, but nonetheless, that we know we have to follow and take some leap of faith. And, and this is one of those, just like Commissioner La Forge was saying, you know, there's, in order for there to even be this possibility, we have to take this leap of faith. And I, for one, am ready to take that, so.
I probably should keep my mouth shut, but I, these, everything that's been said today is, is very, I've taken it on board, it's very personal, and no one, no one up here wants to, anyone to lose their way of life. That, that's not what we're, we're about, but it, and this, well, what I'm trying to say, though, is that the word mega site, to me, automatically has a negative connotation, and it sounds bad, but we're talking about a large piece, parcel of land. And in order to bring job creators and companies to the table, we have to have that land to offer. And, and the benefit. And, and the benefit to assembling that kind of parcel is that it gives us control. It gives you the opportunity to show up and have a say in how that land is used, creating these buffers. And rest assured, we will do everything we can, you know, with you to get as much out of whoever ends up there so that it is a responsible development. There, we'll have a chance to talk about things like runoff, tree buffers, zones and all of this. So this is a way to control that and, and noise and light. And the bigger parcel we can assemble, the more opportunity you have. So we see, there's examples of farmland living alongside these types of sites. Just because it's called mega site doesn't mean it's an oil refinery. It, it's a collection of buildings where job, where people go to work. You've said it yourself, you know, farming is not as easy as it used to be. We need jobs that, that are.
Please, please, let's refrain from that. Go ahead.
I'm saying, I, I take pollution very, very seriously, and we're.
And we want to mitigate that. And I, I understand, we're wrapping up this, this conversation again. This is Commissioner Gauvain's time to speak. We allowed all, everyone who was on our list to have their opportunity to speak. Please go ahead, Commissioner Gauvain.
Oh, I'll wrap up, but I'll just say that I, I am going to support this today, but that's not to say that I have not heard your concerns, and we want to hear them again, and we want to work with you to make sure that this is a responsible development, that you can live alongside and maintain your way of life.
We're looking for a motion.
I, I will. I will. Before I do, I want to say one last thing, and I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
I grew up around a GM plant that has development all around it. I grew up around Tinker Air Force Base, has development all around it. A mega site to me is an open box for the city to pursue, an unknown entity to take it over. And I would hope, we're all volunteers here. We don't make a dime. We don't get paid for this job. It is not pleasant. And, and I will tell you one thing is that no matter how upset you are right now, we're still going to do the best job we can when, when and if anything on this development comes before us to protect your way of life in the area around you. With that being said, I'm going to recommend that planning commission receive this report and recommend the annexation petition and ordinance for consideration to city council.
Commissioner Meek moves to recommend approval of the annexation resolution to the city council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. I would remind our neighbors again that we are making a recommendation to the city council, who will make an ultimate decision on the annexation. Next, we're in line for additional items. Are there any additional items? Are there any reports from planning commission committees? I don't think so. I know there was a study session today, and I'm, I hate that I missed it. Planning commission members, Commissioner Claire.
Nothing from me?
Commissioner Powers.
Nothing.
Commissioner Meek. Commissioner Privet.
It's 6:20. Nope, I'm good.
Commissioner Gauvain. Commissioner LaForge. Which one? That person's not here? Okay, I don't know what we can do. That was deferred.
I'm sorry?
In 2006, somebody signed up to speak.
Do I have that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tough day in the office for us. Tough day for our neighbors as well. I know there's a lot of fear, and so it's hard to cure that and worry. We worry for them too, as much as they may not understand that too. Okay, planning department? Municipal council's office. We've reached the end of our agenda, thankfully. We're adjourned.